To order at 6:02 PM. Dr. Burns.
Mr. Matthews and members of the board, it's our second time to have a pre-meeting in open, so I think we're kind of getting used to that flow. We'll have the agenda shortly for the audience that's out there. And as Mr. Matthews asked you, this is really about the consent agenda items. If the board has questions, and then a brief time for Mr. to report on either recent events or upcoming events that are happening in the district that we think are important for the board to know, as well as our audience out there to know. So we'll let you see them too.
Board members, do you have any questions about the consent agenda?
So Nancy's hand first.
I think there's a number of us. I had a question if that a future board meeting, if we could see like a tally of how we're doing on our technology procurement. We have Chromebooks on this one. I'm just kind of curious what, how we're progressing in our goals.
Okay. Ms. Warnock, I think she got that, not a question about this particular one, but information in the future.
Well, it would be helpful, because I see this and I don't really know in context what it's telling me.
Okay.
At this point, this would allow us to procure Chromebooks for eighth grade, which would complete our middle school.
And that's kind of what I'm wondering, so maybe you can answer me.
Sure, so that would be our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade would all have access to Chromebooks for use during the day. With the grant that we just received from the Dynamic Learning Project, we have that digital coach on campus, and so we believe that having access for all students would be very helpful there. Then we, I want to-
Did they have it as seventh graders?
Yes, they have six, currently six and seven.
No, but when these eighth graders were seventh graders, did they have it?
Yeah, they had access depending on what the campus plan was. So, because they had access for one grade level, and then we added a second grade level, some campuses used them by department, some campuses utilized by grade level. So we tried to maximize the use of the device across all grade levels, so that every student had some digital experience. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Then continuing, sorry, that we would be adding at fifth grade next year, possibly coming to request additional funds, and then we would want to add at 12.
But Ms. Clowen, you'd be interested in seeing a summary of all-
Maybe when you bring an item like Chromebooks, if it says-
Yeah.
Where, then, I think a pie chart's not really the right picture, but more like a bar chart.
A bar graph.
Says, "We've gotten all these covered."
Sure.
This is our next step.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
I have made the notice on this item, how's it going? Because when you do a project of this magnitude, I know we've run into a few glitches that we worked very hard to get. So what's the good, the bad, the ugly, and how great is it going? And maybe sort of bring back some of a report on all that, because iPads, Chromebooks, it's been a lot of money, well invested, I know we've worked hard on it, so I think the more we can share that would be helpful.
Yep, and we'll also, we include that in your quarterly district plan update that we also post on the website, and then you'll also get a final report from last year on the sixteen-seventeen plan, as well as quarterly updates on the seventeen-eighteen plan as we move forward, so.
That was, that was my, on whether they were replacements or new. So I agree, I think, of progress, because it wasn't clear for me.
Miss Romo?
I'm going to recuse myself on Consent Agenda 5P.
What?
It's Consider Approval of Purchase of Dellcom Services.
Now what letter was that?
P as in Paul.
P, okay.
We'll make notes, but Ms. Romans, if you will, once in the regular meeting, put that officially on the record.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
So I had a question on item E, Edmentum Study Island. So I assume that we've used it effectively in the past.
We have been using Think Through Math product, which has been provided gratis by the TEA. For this upcoming school year, the agency has stated that they will no longer fund any supplemental curriculum such as Think Through Math. And so we did a review of several different supplemental products to be used in tutoring, and this was one that most campuses felt that they wanted to adopt strictly as supplemental. This is not a replacement for classroom instruction. So this is in lieu of Think Through Math, which has previously been provided free from the state.
I really want to call attention to it, because I think it is one of those really effective tools that we are losing, or we're not losing, but we're losing funding for. And I think people hear budget cuts, but they don't act, it doesn't actually amount to anything substantial, and I think being able to point to certain things and just say, "This is one thing that we've used to great effect," that we're now funding ourselves because we believe in it, is just something I wanted to bring out there. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Shakman?
Couple of minor points, I don't think it needs to be pulled, but I was noticing on the out-of-state travel requests, the DECO request came through with no dollar amounts. It says that there's some district funds, so we might just remind folks if they can do that. It's minimal, I don't think we need to pull it, because it's not very much, you know, there's some student cost and all that, but unless I missed it, there was none there. The other one is down at the Dellcom Services item P. I noticed that it gives us an anticipated cost of $90,000, and yet it also says it's an as-needed contract. And I wonder if, does there need to be any clarification? Will that, is that spent up to $90,000 as needed? Or is that, so we're hard capping that at $90,000?
That, that's correct. We would bring any purchase that makes exceeded the spending threshold back to the board, so that that cap is at $90,000, and that's typically covered all of our contracted services in years past.
I don't think we need to pull it, I just wanted clarification, yeah.
Any other questions, board members? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Burns.
At this time, Mr. Matthews and members of the board, as you know, we give a few administrative updates, so I'm going to go first. And I know we don't have a large audience out there, but for those who want to watch this later on tape, I want to just send a thank you to all our campuses and our staff for making the first week of school a smooth start, and into day eight now, we just finished, day nine tomorrow. You know, it takes everybody to make a school district run. There's lots of moving parts, 25,000 students, and, you know, 39 comprehensive campuses. It takes a lot, and so I want to compliment our staff, both at the administration level, but at the campus level, because that's where it happens, right? And so we are thankful to them for a smooth start. Also want to thank PTA, because we can't do without them, and I know how involved they were in helping our campuses get schools started. So we always want to extend our thank you to the PTA, because they, well, let's put it that we don't have enough money in the budget to pay for all those voluntary hours that they, that they give us, as well as other parents who may not be involved in the PTA, but are volunteers in different aspects. So thank you. We can't do it alone, and so we ought to be able to always remember to thank you, that you helping us makes a difference for a smooth start of school year. Also, board members, remember you got a calendar of events in your packet, and this is the, well, it's always a busy time of year, but you guys are going to be really busy in the next few months between athletic events, fine arts events, district, other district events, chamber and city events, as well as your conference in October with Tessa Tasby. So check that calendar and let us know if we can help you with any of that stuff. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tillman for a report from her division.
Thank you. CFB is served by both Denton Central Appraisal District, as well as Dallas Central Appraisal District, and in the odd-numbered years, we are given the opportunity to nominate potential candidates to serve on their boards. In front of you, you've got a copy of the letter from Denton Central, as well as Dallas We also gave you a copy of what their board duties represent. The process, if you would like to nominate someone, would be that you would need to turn that information into me, and I will get it on the agenda for October. Our board then has to vote on that nominee. We send that information on to the appraisal districts. They then accumulate all the nominees from all the jurisdictions, and then that would come back to you all to vote on in November. We haven't nominated someone in quite some time, but we have voted on who was going to be serving on those boards. The qualifications are in the letter. We're given the opportunity to nominate one potential candidate for Dallas, and up to five for Denton. So if you could email if you're interested and would like to review and make sure the person is qualified, and then also that they're interested in the duties, if you could email me their address, phone number, in which entity you're referring them for, whether it's Dallas or Denton, by September 20th, then we'll accumulate that information and get it on our October agenda. The second item, we'd like to ask for feedback. At our last month's board meeting, we approved Corrigan to begin the facility assessment study for the district. In conjunction with that facility assessment, we would start, we would like to start working with a committee of advisors from the community, so that we can start sharing the data that we're going to be receiving from Corrigan. In October, we'd like to start with our demographic report, which is already complete, and so we're asking that if you would like to recommend anyone to serve on that committee, that you email that information to me by September 20th as well.
Ms. Tillman, you would like one name from each board member?
Yes.
That concludes yours, Ms. Tillman?
Yes.
Ms. Warnock?
I have two items, Dr. Burns and members of the board, so first, just an update on how our district has responded to assisting those that were affected by Hurricane Harvey and our friends in Houston and the Gulf Coast. We received information and partnered really closely with Metrocrest Services regarding hotels that were receiving FEMA assistance in supporting evacuees. We had 28 hotels in Addison and Farmers Branch that were housing evacuees, so we reached out to all of those hotels and provided enrollment information. We sent trained 50 people at our central office and campus staff that could help as enrolling support on campuses, additional support that might be needed. And we sent teams out to four hotels that we had word that families were interested in school as a mobile registration site. So we took books and Legos and played with kids and hugged parents and talked to them about just a face-to-face connection. We enrolled several students and are providing uniforms, bus transportation, breakfast and lunch, backpacks, school supplies, and also have connected families with Metrocrest Social Services that need that. Additionally, we provide counseling, support, and services. So it's a very mobile population, is what we're learning. We've had several enroll, return, come back, so just, we're going to keep those families in our thoughts and continue working to support their educational needs any way that we can. We also have a great celebration. This past spring, we partnered with University of North Texas to apply for a grant from the U.S. Department of Education in the amount of $2.7 million, and we just received word on Friday that we were awarded the grant funding. So we are really excited about that opportunity. It will be to continue to increase the knowledge and skills of our teachers, of English language learners, and our parent literacy for our pre-K students, and their ability to implement literacy in the home. So we're going to be, lots of exciting things in the works that'll also allow us to provide graduate credit for our teachers here in CFB, and we'll also be partnering with pre-service teachers at the University of North Texas to have them placed in our classrooms. We have a real need for bilingual teachers, and so this will be a great partnership that we're looking forward to the next few years with that grant.
Thank you, Ms. Warnock.
Sure.
Mr. Matthews, members of the board, that concludes reports from administration for tonight's meeting.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes, ma'am.
I had a question for Dr. Burns about convocation. Are you going to do a survey, or get, request feedback on how it went, or what is your plan?
Well, you know, we always try to get some feedback on how well it received. Typically, when I go out to the campuses with my visit, I ask them, "What do they think?" And the number one thing on my think this year is, "What do they think about convocation?" So I will have some anecdotal feedback for sure. Angel and I've talked about whether we'll do a survey with, collect some data, but we'll definitely ask them what they think when I'm out there. So far, I haven't heard any negative feedback, so we'll count that as positive.
I wonder how many people are still in the district that remember the song and dance routines we used to have, convocation? That was quite a, that was quite a spectacle, just saying.
I've offered to do that next year, so I'll work on it.
Have we gotten any kind of idea from FEMA or anybody that would give us any tip-off clue? If Irma proves to be as severe in the Miami area, would we also likely see an increase in evacuees even this far?
We haven't had any information about that. All of our contact has really been through Metrocrest. They've, they've been our great partner in giving information.
Thanks for all the good work in that area.
Any other comments or questions, board members? Hearing none, seeing none. This meeting is adjourned at 6:18 PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your attendance. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton-Farmer Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees to order at 7:02 PM on September 7, 2017. Please join me in standing as Reverend Willie Rainwater from Crass Community Connection leads the board's opening prayer, and remain standing for our pledges to the flag. Reverend Rainwater.
If you would, that's by your head. Thank the Lord. Gracious Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that you're giving us to see another day. We thank you, O Lord God, that you love us to let us be able to witness another day. Father, we just thank you, we give you all praises. Thank you, Lord, for your son came here, O Lord God, and blessed us with his abundant life that we have, that we live every day, Lord God. Father, we want to pray a prayer for those less fortunate than us down in Houston. We ask you, Father, to bless them with what they need, and Father, to let them know there is still hope. Deal with the time and storms, time, Father, but we ask those down, bless those, Father, down Beaumont, Texas, Lord God, and we ask your blessing for those down in Miami, Father God. As as you move, Father God, on that, in the name of Jesus, we pray, and we thank you, Lord, for so much. We ask your blessing, Father, for the school board here in Carrollton, Texas, O Lord, ask you to stop by, Lord, and visit with them. We ask you, Father God, there is new school board members, it's a new season now, Father. You say it's a season for everything, Father God. We starting up now, we ask, O Father, that you be, give us, give them knowledge and wisdom, and understanding, Father, direct their path, O Father God. Ask, O Father God, that you tenderize their heart, Father God, that they understand that love will heal many things, O Father God. Those, Father, new principals, Father, in our community that is coming in this year, Father God, be with them, O Lord God. Many of them, Father God, is going to be kind of frightened, Father, because this is a new project, but Father, let them know there is hope and things going to be all right. Because you said you would supply all our needs according to your Christ, O Father God, in the name of Jesus, O Father. And we thank you, Father, that you can do all those things through Christ who strengthen us, O Father. We ask you to continue to bless the superintendent, Father, with his health and strength. Ask, O Father God, that you can lead him, Father God, that, O Father God, that we have a great year that we ever had here in Carrollton, Texas, because we all believe upon you, we're going to pin upon you, Father God, and follow what your Spirit tells us to do and direct our paths. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Now please remain standing, as Randy Shakman leads us in our pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now Richard Fleming and our pledge to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, may be seated. And before we go any further, I need all of you to say, "The Reverend Willie Rainwater, real fast, five times." Hey, do it. Thank you, Willie. Please remain, where we are, here we go. As a district, I'll be all right, I'll be all right. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for each student. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, actions, and decisions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items, which may be discussed in a closed session, as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the open meetings law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, all board members are present. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. As required by Board Policy, BBD Local, let the minutes reflect that all board members have met or exceeded the number of continuing education training hours required for 2016. Now ladies and gentlemen, before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board encourages comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so during Agenda Item Number Four, Audience for Guests. Please submit your request to do so on one of the forms provided on the table outside the door, and you may place the completed form on that table, or you may give it to Assistant, Administrative Assistant Ms. Sharon Scrivener, who's over there now. When the board addresses Agenda Item Number Four, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board. We will now proceed with Agenda Item Number Two, Student Achievement Presentation, one of my favorite things we do on board meeting nights. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, members of the board, and to our audience. If this is your first time with us, welcome. If this is a repeat visit, welcome back. And as you will recall, that we believe and this board has been committed to making the main thing the first thing, and the main thing in this school district is student achievement. And so we make that the first presentation of every board meeting, and tonight, we are beginning with a part of what we think is the most, if not the most important, certainly a vital part to that, and that is how we find our teachers, grow our teachers, and retain our teachers. And we have a saying that the quality of an organization cannot exceed the quality of its people. Ms. Warnock?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. This year, our series, as we think about our student achievement presentations, is about why we choose public schools and why we choose CFB as our educational home. I was reading this week, Education Week, and some new research out from the National Center for Education Statistics, that tells us that traditional public school teachers are much more likely than the teachers in charter schools to have advanced degrees. Forty-eight percent likelihood that your public school teacher has an advanced degree, compared to 38% in charter schools. Teachers in public schools are much more likely to have more years of experience, the average years of experience in public school in the nation, 14 years. Our charter school teachers, 10 years. We see in Texas, our charter school teachers with many, many limited experiences, lack of certification, and that's not the opportunity that we provide in public schools, and here in CFB, where we have highly qualified teachers with advanced degrees and are very transparent about the certifications that they have. And how that translates to educational outcomes, the Center for Research on Educational Outcomes out of Stanford published a study in 2015 specifically on Texas schools, and this is about the impact of our teachers. Compared to the educational gains that charter students might have had in traditional public school, the analysis shows that in a year's time, on average, charter school students in Texas show less progress in both reading and mathematics. The impact is statistically significant. Thinking of a 180-day school year as one year of learning, an average Texas charter student would have completed 14 fewer days of learning in reading, and 29 fewer days of learning in mathematics than their counterparts in Texas public schools. It's because of the work that our amazing teachers do, and our processes as we find, grow, and keep our teachers here in public schools, is why we want to encourage you to choose public and choose CFB. Turn it over to Ms. Bailey.
Excuse me. Good evening. Our presentation tonight, Find, Grow, Keep, and I will have it on this screen, so you all pay attention to that. Don't look at me and make me nervous. Because I get a frog as soon as I get up here, so anyway. Find, Grow, Keep, we found 281 new teachers to join our CFB family this year. And of those 281, we have 119 elementary teachers and 162 secondary teachers. And then of that 281, 28 of those new teachers are CFB graduates, so they are homegrown. And then 18 of those teachers did their student teaching with us. So they were familiar with CFB and chose to stay with us. And then we found that several of our new teachers were former teachers who came back to CFB as quick as they could. So finding the best teachers and the brightest teachers requires coordinated efforts from the Personnel Department, from Strategic Communications, which includes our Marketing Department, and Educational Services. And we partner with universities, we attend job fairs, we use social media to recruit our teachers, but we feel that the best advertisement is by word of mouth, when our teachers and staff share the good news about CFB. So joining our CFB team, it requires, we, we put them through a lot, but not too much. We ease them in easily. After finding our teachers, we are charged with growing and developing our teachers to meet the needs of each student. Our Personnel Department starts a process with an onboarding program to introduce new teachers to not only the school district, but also the cities that make up our district. After orientation, new teachers attend a three-day New Hire Academy at Learn More, Achieve More, and then after Learn More, Achieve More, teachers attend campus orientation. Then comes August in service. In August, teachers are welcomed to the new school year by Dr. Burns with an inspiring message during convocation. And he did that how many times this year, Dr. Burns? Oh, so he had it down. And each campus then plans staff development based on district goals and campus needs. During the school year, after the school year starts, we don't just give our teachers the key and say, "Go on in, close your door, have at it." We provide new hires with campus mentors, district coaches, and are, they are visited regularly to help establish effective classroom procedures to ensure student success. And with us tonight, we have three new teachers who will share their experiences with onboarding and staff development in CFB. We have Jorge Romero from Davis, Timberland Mays from Sheffield Elementary, and Sean Donahoe from Smith High School. So Jorge, come on up.
Good evening. First, I have to say that I'm honored and humbled to be here with you today. My name is Jorge Romero. I was born in Caracas, Venezuela. After I graduated college as an architect, I joined my best friend on restarting a steel pipe manufacturing facility, where we learned lean manufacturing practices under the mentorship of two Stanford University PhDs, and for me, that was a life-changing event. After that professional experience- my wife and myself decided to move to the United States because our democracy was lost. And you are aware of what's going on in my home country. In the year 2000, we moved to the United States, to Miami. And for three years, I worked as a construction-related architect. And my wife graduated as a Management Information Systems in Florida International University. And when she finished, the next day, I said, "You know, this is a hurricane prom zone and..." So, again, I foresaw something like my home country. So, I'm always foreseeing things. Scary sometimes. So, I arrived, we arrived to Dallas in 2003, and she became a teacher. I kind of held back since I had three years of working in Miami. So, she started as a third-grade teacher in Irving Independent School District, and she brought homework from the kids. I corrected some of their homework and said, "Look, I mean, this kid has these issues with subtractive, with addition." And that was kind of my click. I thought to myself, "I can do this." And that's my beginning of my teaching career. So, I became a teacher in 2004 and taught for eleven years as a fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, teaching math and science. And that's when I learned all the challenges that we live as educators, okay? And I guess it was that challenge that keeps me as a teacher. It's not an easy job. It's not easy. So, finally, last June, I met my principal, Lisa Williams. And from the beginning, from the interview, it was kind of a chemistry. We had the typical conversation about continuous improvement, Edward Deming. And we keep connecting over and over in different issues. And finally, I came to realize and learn from her and see her passion, her experience, and dedication. And I was able to see myself. It was kind of looking in the mirror. And that happens rarely in your lifetime. And we also talked about adjusting instruction based on analyzing data and how you kind of change that approach to teaching when you look at the numbers. And the numbers speak a lot. And since I had that experience at the beginning as a manager, where we had to crunch a lot of numbers to see which pipes were going bad, now I can see using that same experience when we are studying our, the progress of our students. And I love crunching data. I like to follow up where the needs of instructions are. And that's what makes me a teacher, okay? So, well, after meeting her, she hired me. Yep. Sounds easy, but it happened. So, I kept on finding connections with Davis. Another connection was during the interview. I happen to have a daughter and a son. She's twelve and he's eleven. And my favorite elementary teacher happened to be in the interview. And I was like, "What are you doing here?" And she, "What are you doing here?" We both like, and for me, it was like amazing because my daughter can't speak for this teacher like endlessly about her. And for me, it was something's going on in this school for my favorite daughter's teacher to be here. So, that's another connector. And, well, finally, I found another connector. Ms. Davis is very close to Momentus Institute, which you are, where is an amazing institution for recovering kids with emotional issues and psychological issues. And we have to take my son to that institution last year. And I learned all the relaxation, breathing, and techniques that helps them become a better, a better citizen, right? So, then, after the interview, I was hired, get to meet the staff personnel, the warmth. I started to meet Carrollton people and then came Learn More, Achieve More. And oh my God, that was, what an inspiring session. I would recommend that, just to get like a fresh air of amazing people that I was able to meet. And I have to quote some of them, like Dr. Adam Science and his passion, and Dr. Alan November and his curiosity. And again, I felt myself like looking in the mirror. Oh, there's another curious guy there, you know? And then Dr. Tim Canol and his calling. And then, wow, that's exactly what's going on with me, being an architect, going all this journey, and now having this calling out of nowhere. You know, it's amazing that that's even a theme of talking about. I wasn't aware. So, well, amazing sessions in Learn More, Achieve More. And finally, I get to meet Dr. Burns. I saw, I didn't know who he was, but I, the first time I saw some, a person that was vigilant. He was looking, he was always there. And I didn't know him, who he was. Finally, at the end of the sessions, he stood up and I'm going to quote, "Every minute counts." Right? Every minute counts. And in lean production, again, that's paramount. So, again, that's another connector right there. Out of nowhere, it's like, wow, God, thank you. And where the true connection came with Dr. Burns was the, and I quote again, "The passion and the perseverance." And I'm a passionate teacher. I do enjoy teaching. I give myself away. And when I am in front of a kid who needs something, and I try different ways until, I take it, you know, I grab him. And also the perseverance. And that's what I hope to develop in Carrollton. And thank you for having me here. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Timberland Mays, and I want to thank you guys for letting me be here today. And I'm honored as well to be speaking to the board and to Carrollton, I call it Carrollton family. I want to start off with a little story. It's about a child who was overall a pretty good kid. And this child actually got to attend CFB schools. She was a, she was a very mild-mannered kid, but the child just really was a big chatterbox and wanted to be the teacher's friend. Keyword, friend. This student loved to help and always needed something to do to feel important, whether that was having a regular conversation with the teacher or always helping doing something. This student just wanted to feel important. Academically, the child really didn't struggle much, except in math. This wasn't the type of child who just wanted to get the answer and be done. Instead, this child wanted to get the answer, then asked the teacher, "Why is that the answer and how is that the answer?" And in math, sometimes that can be tricky in the classroom to do. And not many kids are really worried about why and how. They just want to know the answer. So, questions like that, of course, they are tough. But at the time, the homeroom teacher that this student had, she just had a really hard time connecting with this child. She just couldn't find enough jobs for the child. She couldn't stop the child from talking to all her peers, and she couldn't stop the child from talking to her. So, she was just super overwhelmed and super frustrated. Well, the child's mother began to worry, and she wondered and figured out, "What do I need to help my child not only to succeed in math, but to succeed in a homeroom where she doesn't overwhelm that teacher?" So, my mother, the mother, of course. The mother, of course, she did call for a meeting with the principal, the counselor, the homeroom teacher, and the teacher that she did want to be the child's new teacher. She respectfully expressed her thanks and appreciation to that current homeroom teacher. And she told her, you know, she really did believe she did everything she could. But this child really and truly needed someone who had a strong personality to match that strong personality, but to still have that soft and gentle side. So, of course, long story short, the mother got her wish or her request granted. And this new homeroom teacher, she literally was like a heaven sent. She came in, she answered all the whys, all the hows. But the good thing about this teacher, she knew how to stop all the whys and all the hows. The new teacher just kept the student busy. She kept jobs. She kept, she made her feel important. And that was the most, and most biggest and concerning thing for the mother. So, again, long story short, kind of gave that away. That student is me. That parent is my mother. And that new homeroom teacher is now my boss and principal of Sheffield Elementary, Ms. Amy Miller. So, Ms. Miller, thank you for changing my life. There's not enough words that I can say to you. But I'm glad that I'm following. I'm glad that I'm following in your footsteps. So, being a part of the CFB family as a kid, being a part of the Rainwater family, then a Blaylock Bear, and I'll always be a Creekview Mustang, I'm more excited to be a Sheffield Wrangler educator and teacher. I like to thank my Sheffield family because I have felt so welcomed in this school. It's been amazing. It's been challenging, but it's been amazing. I like to thank the people who did all the sessions and everything to run the Learn More, Achieve More. It felt very welcoming. As a second-year teacher and just coming back home, I was overwhelmed with questions, but I will say that the questions beat me to the punch. They answered everything. They answered things I didn't even know I needed to ask. But I figured that out. So, I just want to thank the board, thank Dr. Burns, thank Ms. Michelle Bailey for helping me out. And just glad to be back home, and thank you.
Hi, everybody. I don't know if I can make you cry, but maybe I can make you laugh. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for having me. My name is Sean Donahoe. I'm a biology teacher at Newman Smith High School. It's my first year here. So, my journey to CFB has been pretty circuitous, you could say. I'm an native Texan, but I initially went to college in California and to study science. But while I was there, I kind of caught that film disease that so many people get whenever you're near Hollywood. So, switched my major like that. Started studying film and television after I graduated. Worked in Hollywood for about five years. Did every possible job you can imagine, you know, from the rubble to the Ritz, I guess. After that, I lived in London, where I studied theater and business. And then, most recently, I lived in China, in Beijing, for the last five years, where I worked as an educator and traveled extensively. In China, I taught students from one and a half years old. And yeah, that is as ridiculous as it sounds. All the way up into college level and even adults. So, I've kind of done it all. I've taught in public schools with fifty students in one room. And I've taught in private schools with ten fifth graders who are on a high school level. I taught science, math, history, literature, reading, writing. I've given lectures on topics from film, politics, to even the Beatles. And there's one thing that I've learned. It's that other countries aren't like what most Americans think. But even more true, I would say that we're not like what they think either. So, we can learn a lot. When I first moved back to America a few months ago, I enrolled in an alternative certification program because I guess the teaching profession kind of chose me, even though it wasn't necessarily my first choice in life. I studied diligently to, again, become an expert in science, which was and is my first love. I hit the books hard, and it was my life completely. When it came time to apply for jobs, I had my sights set on CFB. I'm from the area, I'm from Sherman, so I knew I wanted to stay near here. But I kind of wanted to, I've been living in big cities a lot. I wanted to be near the action. So, it's a nice compromise, I guess. CFB was kind of my dream district because as I was doing research, I noticed that many times, whenever teachers came to CFB, they tended to stay. And many times, they would stay their entire careers. And so, that's something I kind of chalked up to having a great culture. And that means something to me. With the school year approaching, my nervousness started to grow. I didn't have a job. I was late to apply, these kinds of things. So, one mid-afternoon, I get a call. This guy, he tells me, "Hey, I'm the new principal over at Newman Smith." This is, of course, Mr. Ariola. And he just wanted to know about me. He wanted to know my background. He wanted to know my classroom management style. He wanted to know how I behaved outside of class. Do I see myself as a role model? So, I kind of caught on. He wasn't just interviewing me as a teacher. He was kind of interviewing me to see, do I fit the culture that they were looking for? I knew I liked him immediately after that conversation. And I was even more confident in the district because this is a guy they had chosen to replace such a beloved principal. So, several days later, I got a call from Personnel. They offered me the job officially. It was party time. It was nice. So, ever since that first phone call, I've come into contact with numerous people. They all share that same passion, that same happiness, that joy. You can just kind of feel it. From the first trainings to my meetings with my Science Department over at Newman, I have never felt, not even one moment, in all honesty, that these people were not here a hundred percent for me. I've never felt any kind of jealousy, any kind of things you may read about that could go wrong in school districts. So, that feeling that someone just truly wanting you to succeed, it's not something I can really put into words, but you know, sorry. You know it when you feel it. And I just felt it. So, the hype is real about this district. It's amazing. I'm really lucky that you guys took a chance on me. And I look forward to having the best year ever. And whenever I say bye, I'm not saying goodbye. I'm saying BYE, best year ever.
Do I know how to pick them or what? Hey, I can really just tear up the rest of my little presentation. Thank you so much, teachers, for giving of your time tonight. I appreciate it. So, as Sean said, one of the greatest attractions for this district, for keeping our teachers, is our culture. And that is a focus on continuous improvement. And then, the training and support that we provide for our teachers is another great attraction. If you go outside of the district, other districts would love to have CFB employees because we have a reputation of training our teachers well, and they will snatch them up in a heartbeat. So, then, after that, what about that Child Development Academy? My goodness. I know, give that a hand, yes. Let's not, and what a great foundation for learning for our children of our employees. That is a great foundation. And we have also invested in technology. All of our teachers have Chromebooks. And those Chromebooks allow our teachers to provide the lessons that our students need to be able to be successful in the 21st century. And last but not least, that competitive pay, party time, that's right. Thanks to the board for providing that financial incentives of raises, longevity pay, and incentive pay to keep CFB competitive in the metroplex marketplace. And we'd like to leave you with this thought, our why. Dr. Burns always says, "What's your why?" A good teacher can inspire hope, ignite the imagination, and instill a love of learning. And that is why we are so fortunate to have the teachers that we have in CFB. We know that they will do great things for our students today. And we'd like to conclude our presentation with a preview, this is a preview, of a recruiting video we will use this spring to help shine a bright spotlight on what CFB has to offer new teachers. Thank you.
I wanted somewhere where I could have a home base and feel like I could grow as a teacher and where I could also have students that were willing to grow and learn with me.
Just the fact that I have so many people that are there to help me when I need it is, it's helping me be a better teacher because I have more confidence in myself.
I chose CFB to be closer to family. And also, the atmosphere of the staff makes you feel at home.
I love my principal to death. Like, she's just one of those people who likes to push you and, you know, show you what you're capable of.
Having people that really...
Having people that really are passionate about helping others, not just the students, but the teachers as well, is really, just makes it a great positive environment to work in.
As I develop my professional skills, but also, as we develop a culture and an environment that's a positive and safe place to make mistakes.
I'm originally from Sacramento, California, so, learning, you know, about the history and culture of Dallas is really cool to me.
Moving to DFW like I did was experience, experience everything they can.
One of the things that's so great about Dallas is that you have a lot of variety of things that you can do. If you want to try a new restaurant or something, there's gonna be something just down the street.
I've heard so many awesome things about CFB from, around Dallas, around the DFW area, from other teachers, and then, when I got here, all of it was completely true.
The reason I became a teacher was to have a positive influence on my students. It's important for them to have somewhere where they have a good, strong, positive role model.
So, the opportunity to be better than what they were yesterday, that's what I'm thinking I'm doing for those kids. It's just motivation, so if I can inspire those kids to be better, that's my goal.
I see ways that I work with my students and even think, "Hey, that might work, you know, with my daughter, so let me try that tactic at home." So, I definitely feel like school, you know, also kind of rolls over to home life as well.
The students are phenomenal, and they, you know, they do everything they can, the teachers are so willing to help out, our administration, they seem super supportive, and so, all those things just kind of made me wanna teach here and stay here.
Dr. Burns and members of the board, these are efforts to find, grow, and keep. We have amazing teachers in our district, and that's the reason why we choose public
We have any questions or comments at this time? Well, I'd like to make one real quick. Ms. Bailey, where are you?
I'm right here.
Oh, here I am. Yes, ma'am, you do know how to pick 'em. Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to our next agenda item, item number three, which is recognition of special guests and announcements. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, and members of the board. You're familiar with this, but for our audience that's not out there, one of the things that we believe in, in this district, in this culture, is that you find the good and praise it, and when you have exceptional teachers working in the classroom, you make sure you recognize that exceptional effort and accomplishments. We call it our VIP, very important professionals, right? It's the Hall of Fame of teaching in CFB, right? It's the Hall of Fame, recognizing those that have given so much to education, especially our students. And we like to kinda connect things with our theme, you know, so make every minute count. The VIPs are the ones that make every day count, they make every moment count, they make sure every student counts. You're gonna hear a little bit more about them from their principals tonight, and as your VIP is introduced, we'd like for you to stand, staff members, friends, family that are here to, to recognize and see your VIPs, please stand when they're called, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Matthews to join me down in the front so we can induct our new VIP Hall of Famers.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Burns. My name is Kim Chow Jackson, Principal at Blair Elementary. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you our newest member into the, into the very important profession of teaching, Mr. Jaime Cobos. When I began working on my speech for tonight, Jaime said, "Just tell them I'm a cool dude." But I have much more to say than that, Mr. Cobos. Mr. Cobos is starting his 19th year of teaching in the district. So, Dr. Burns, we found Mr. Cobos, we've grown Mr. Cobos, and we are keeping Mr. Cobos. He began teaching in CFB in 1999. His first teaching assignment was at Montgomery Elementary, teaching kindergarten for three Due to staffing needs, he moved to become a 4th grade teacher. I would have loved to have seen Mr. Cobos as a kindergarten teacher because we all know him as a phenomenal 5th grade teacher. So, we have a hard time imagining him with the little ones. He has been teaching 5th grade since 2001, and it takes a special person to teach 5th graders, as you all know, and Mr. Cobos is certainly a special teacher. Jaime has taught entire families throughout Blair Elementary. Students come back to visit him often. I asked his current students to tell me about Mr. Cobos, and this is what they had to say. Isabella Garcia said, "Mr. Cobos cares about us. He is strict, but he does it for our own good because he wants us to have a better life and a better education." Ricardo Cervantes said, "He is funny and tells us jokes," which I'm still wondering what the jokes are. "He makes learning fun because he teaches us games and makes it fun." I asked his students, what did they know about Mr. Cobos coming up before they had him, because he teaches 5th grade? The majority of them said, "We heard he was strict, but nice, and that you have to follow directions in Mr. Cobos's class, and you better do your homework." Jaime sets high expectations for his students. He works with them and their families to help each student achieve at high levels. From parent conferences to phone calls home, he teaches not just the students, but sometimes the whole family as well. You may walk into Mr. Cobos's class and hear him doing a read aloud in various voices, he is a one-man show. The students in his class are engaged. His students also told me this about Mr. Cobos, "He does not like cheese, and he does not like to drive. He loves coffee and is a marathon runner." And that is the truth, he does not like cheese. But he is also a marathon runner. He and his wife, Telly, who is also a teacher at Blair, are remarkable runners. While most of us are waking up in the morning, the Coboses have already run six to seven miles in the morning before arriving to school early every single day. His colleagues describe Jaime as a doer. He is a teacher that year after year gets the job done. He is super efficient and very effective. His students become success stories. Mr. Cobos is accompanied tonight by his wife, Telly Cobos. "Telly, we are glad that you traveled all the way to Spain to meet Jaime, that you guys got married, and then that you have both made CFB your professional home. And Jaime, I am certain that your dad is beaming with pride back home in Spain. Tonight, we honor you, Mr. Cobos. We thank you and applaud you for all you have done and continue to do for our Blair kiddos, for their families, and our CFB family. Congratulations on being inducted into the very important profession of teaching."
Good evening, Mr. Matthews, Dr. Burns, and members of the board. My name is Susan Machado, Principal of Farmers Branch Elementary. I would like to introduce you to our newest member in the very important profession of I don't think I've ever called her Amanda Clulley, but Mandy graduated from Midwestern State University in 1998, where she was the point guard for the Lady Indians basketball team. She went on to graduate with her master's degree from Texas A&amp;M Commerce two years later. This year marks Mandy's 19th year, another, see, keep, grow, year in education, and her fifth year as our fabulous PE coach. Prior to coming to FBE, Mandy has taught and coached at the middle school, high school, and university levels. When she isn't pouring her time and energy into our precious students, Mandy enjoys cooking, exercising, and spending time with her family. Mandy is held in the highest regards among her colleagues. One of her teammates stated, "She creates diverse learning experiences for our students, swimming, skating, volleyball, and basketball," just to name a few. She teaches all students, literally, every Mustang every three days, and devotes much of her energy to go above and beyond. Even when balancing work and home life, she's willing to put in the time and energy to make all of her teaching experiences meaningful. She has high expectations of her students while also creating a culture of respect and a safe environment. Another staff member shared with me, "Can we talk about the field day extravaganzas she puts on, right? Even on a rainy day." Creating a new theme every year is certainly no small task, including special field day t-shirts, but she organizes it to the finest details and executes it with a huge smile on her face. She's such a great example to our students and staff. We're lucky to have her on our team. One of the newest FBE staff members said, "I've only been at FBE for a week, and I can already see that she has passion for our kids, getting them to move and to be active. She's been so welcoming to me and gets along with everyone. I've heard other staff members say how great she is, so I know that she's done a great job at FBE. As her principal, I can truly say that I've never seen Mandy have a bad day. She keeps a smile and positive attitude all, in all situations." Some of our FBE Mustangs shared their thoughts with me about Coach Clulley. When I, when asked why he liked Coach Clulley's PE class, Anthony responded, "She treats us all equally. You know, people who like to run versus people who don't like and talk a lot." So then, I took the opportunity to teach, that's athletes versus non-athletes. He was trying to say it nicely. She, he said, "She makes us all work out, but she makes it fun. I like it when we get to see the drills from the middle school and high school students, too." Roehleio shared, "She encourages us to eat healthy or warns us that something bad might happen to our bodies if we don't. Sometimes, I don't wanna eat healthier exercise, but I remember what Coach Clulley says, and I try." Me too, Roehleio. For five years now, Mandy has been partnering with the athletes and coaches of our feeder schools, Vivian Field Middle School and Arnold Turner High School, for many sports clinics throughout the year. It's a win-win for everyone involved. Our students love learning from the big kids, and our former Mustangs love to come back to FBE and see their former teachers. We are fortunate to have such a great relationship with our feeder athletic programs, and we have Mandy to thank for developing and fostering this strong relationship among our schools. Farmers Branch Elementary and CFB are fortunate to have Mrs. Amanda Clulley as a member of
Good evening, Mr. Matthews, Dr. Burns, and board members. My name is Pam Henderson, I am the principal at River Chase Elementary, and it is my privilege tonight to introduce you to our newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Megan began her teaching career at River Chase in 2011 after graduating from the University of Kansas. She quickly became an invaluable piece of the Eagle family puzzle. She is adored and respected by students, staff members, and parents alike. She carries herself with poise, and her pleasant smile and calm demeanor make those around her feel a sense of belonging even when they've known her for a short time. Her passion for teaching math so that each student is successful can be seen by anyone who enters her classroom. When last year's 3rd graders found out their former teacher would be honored, they were super excited. One student shared, "I thought math would be hard, but it wasn't. Even when it was hard, she just said, 'Keep trying,' and I did. Now I'm in 4th grade, so thank you." Ms. Fleming is equally as passionate about nurturing her students and helping them to develop a growth mindset as she is about teaching them math. As Keenan thought about his experience in Ms. Fleming's class last year, he said, "Every time we did something bad or started to cry, she was never mean to us. She would just come over, calm us down, and say, 'It's okay, you made a mistake, think about all the good things, focus on the future, and be better.'" Last year, one of her parents was amazed after observing Ms. Fleming in action during after-school practice for the math competition. He couldn't believe her level of energy, nor had he ever seen his son that excited about anything other than basketball. He said, "I had no idea teachers were this good. All parents need to witness this." To her peers, Ms. Fleming is a caring friend, an enthusiastic teacher, and a positive mentor. As one of our teachers so nicely expressed, Megan goes above and beyond for her students. She inspires them and guides them to help them reach their potential. She also collaborates with less experienced teachers to help them achieve excellence as well. She is always ready to help. We are grateful to have Megan on our team, and we're honored to recognize her as a member
Good evening. I am Melissa Wesley, Principal of the B. Salazar Learning Center, and it is my pleasure to present to you our VIP, Mike Sealy. Mike and his wife, Joan, reside in Carrollton, and they have three children, Andy, Josh, and John. He is active in his church and community and influences his own children as well as others through these activities. Having been a CFB community member for so long, Mike feels like the CFB staff members and students are part of his extended family. And in fact, there are actually two principals and a mayor in here who can say that Mike was their teacher in CFB. Mike has been a part of the CFB team for 28 years, teaching business education courses at Turner High School, then moving to Salazar for the last 10 years where he teaches character education to our high school students. To see Mike Sealy in action is to see happiness, contentment, and a soul-deep compassion that is felt by the staff and most especially, the students at Salazar. What is unique about Mike Sealy is his heart and his ability to build relationships with every student. I have never heard any student or staff member say they didn't like Mr. Sealy. At Salazar, this is an amazing feat and a testament to Mike's personality. He just never has a bad day and never sees a bad student. One student says, "Mr. Sealy, you always have a smile on your face and embrace everyone else. You are the kindest, most positive teacher I've ever met, and if you've taught me anything, it's how to have a good attitude and to be happy." When asked for words to describe Mike, one could say, "Positive, encouraging, supportive, joyful, smiling, positive, passionate, kind, inspiring, positive." Well, you get the idea. Mike is an outstanding advocate for our students and their needs, and he continues to encourage our students even after they leave Salazar and stays in touch beyond high school. Mentoring students is not just something that Mike does for the few weeks that students are at Salazar, it is a lifelong vocation and belief that students need as many warm, loving, supportive adults in their lives as possible. "You have the ability to change students' lives, and you're awesome at it," comes from a student who is currently at Salazar. One staff member says, "Whatever words I might choose to describe Mike are not enough. Mike has to be experienced. He can only be defined by his actions. I have seen the toughest students soften as a result of being his student. Mike lives his authentic truth every day, and by example, he teaches his students to live their truth. One can't help but smile when around Mike. His dry sense of humor makes us laugh at his corny jokes and encourages us to lighten up and breathe a little, especially when dealing with the day-in, day-out challenge of working with our students. He's the standard of patience and a role model for the staff when it comes to the love and care of students. As one teacher says, "Mike Sealy is one of the best men I ever met. I wanna be just like Mike when I grow up." Working with Mike makes us all want to be better people. "He makes anyone around him a better person as you just have to stop and think about everything you do, think, and say," went around Mike's joyful spirit. The ability to make everyone around him feel like they can do better and believe that they can be better are qualities that are of critical importance. Mike Sealy is a model for human kindness and the way that we should all treat each other. It is my pleasure to recognize our VIP, Mike Sealy. It is my pleasure to recognize our VIP, Mike Sealy."
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Mr. Matthews, and members of the school board. I am Amy Miller, principal of Sheffield Elementary. Please join me in welcoming Sheffield Elementary's newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Ms. Jennifer Munoz. "I am only one, but still I am one. I cannot do everything, but still I can do something. And because I cannot do everything, I will not refuse to do the something that I can do," Helen Keller. This quote sums up Jennifer perfectly. She goes above and beyond every day to help students in her room become proficient in reading language arts using their native language of Spanish, and she never fails to help staff members when they need it as well. Staff members said these kind words about Jennifer. She is a hard worker. She goes above and beyond for her students. She cares for kids and doesn't complain about work. She volunteers to do more or to help. She goes the extra step to help kids. She's a super person inside and out. One of my brand-new teachers said this. She has been very welcoming and reassuring that I will succeed this year. She is very positive and willing to help. I think that speaks volumes when a new teacher recognizes in the first week how much Jennifer has to offer. Jennifer is the kind of teacher who facilitates learning so students are actively involved. She embraces any district initiative. There is a buzz in the classroom as students make work to gain in reading and writing skills in Spanish. Conversations are taking place at tables, and what you hear is rich dialogue with vocabulary, which lets one know the level of understanding is high. Jennifer never fails to have daily guided reading, and her students make great gains in reading. We strive to have students reading on grade level or at least complete a year's growth in reading. Because of her commitment to learning how to be the best reading teacher and implementing quality guided reading daily, last year she had 88% of her students reading at or above grade level at the end of the year. Jennifer will always volunteer to help us in any area that we are shorthanded. This summer, she was one of two teachers who came and helped at registration for two days to test our students in their Spanish knowledge. This required her to take the Woodcock Munoz Update Class the week prior to registration. Jennifer willingly did this to help our school be more efficient during registration. Her students absolutely love and adore her. Louise says, and they've only had her for nine short days, but they had a lot to say. "She teaches us a lot of new things." Louise said, "I'm sorry, she is going to help us read, and she is a good teacher." And Amelia said, "She teaches us a lot of new things." And finally, Sophia says, "The teacher helps us. She teaches us and helps us when we spell wrong and how to spell wrong words right. By doing so, it helps us grow and understand more so we know how to properly write and read." It is my joy, Jennifer, to recognize you as a member of the very important profession of teaching. Adesanto Soro para todos nosotros in Sheffield.
Mr. Matthews and members of the board, that concludes our VIP recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. I get to talk a little bit now about, y'all. I want you to know that this is a big thing. This is a big deal. Your principals, the people you work with, the principal didn't just put all the names in the hat and draw one out. You earned the right to be sitting on the front row tonight. You are the reason we have high achievement for each student. I don't know very many of you. I felt guilty standing next to you, Hammy. I've never ran a marathon. I don't even like to drive my car 26 miles, okay? So I'm very impressed. Mandy, I felt guilty in that, all the physical stuff. Anyway, I'm looking for a personal trainer if any of y'all are interested. But really, to each of you, congratulations. But I have to spend an extra minute talking about Mike Sealy. I've known Mike for 26 of those 28 years he's been here. I had the fortunate pleasure, when I was an administrator at Aral Turner, of being his evaluating administrator several times. I've been in this district a long time. I've seen a lot of good teachers. I've never seen one better than Mike Sealy. And all the things that you said about him, Melissa, were exactly right. He's always got a smile on his face. Whenever I was feeling down, I'd just go say, "Talk to Sealy. He'd make me feel better," just automatically. Congratulations, Mike. This should be about the 10th or 12th time you've received this award. I don't know. But congratulations to each and every one of you, and thank you for what you do. Thank you. All right, this concludes our recognition of special guests and announcements portion of the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to remind you one more time, that the board does encourage comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or representative of a group, may do so during Agenda Item Number Four, Audience for Guests. Please submit your request if you haven't done so. You can do that there on the table out here. You can put your request there. You can give it to Ms. Scrivener, who's sitting over there. When the board addresses Agenda Item Number Four, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board. And at this time now, we would encourage all of you to stick around for the entire board meeting. But there are probably two or three of you, or 20 or 30 of you, that might need to go somewhere else instead of sticking around here. We're going to take a 10-minute recess right now, and I'm going to make that an 11-minute. We're going to be back in here at 8:15. This meeting of the Carrollton Farmer Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees is called back to order at 8:15. The board will now address Agenda Item Number Four, Audience for Guests. Audience for Guests is a mechanism the board uses to receive feedback and input from our constituents. Comments should pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Our timekeeper, Ms. Klein, will provide a hand signal as the end of your three minutes approaches. Remember that the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board may defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. Ms. Scrivener, are there any Audience for Guests this evening? Dr. Burns, thank you. When I call your name, approach the podium, tell us your name and where you live. First up, Patricia Edmiston.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Patricia Edmiston, and I live in Farmers Branch. Sounds like "why" may be the magic word around here. So I ask permission to use it tonight. Why do I stand here this evening? I wish to speak to the action of term limits. I respectfully request that you vote to put this issue on the ballot so the citizens of our school district may decide if they want this school board to have term limits or not. Thank you.
Next up, Richard Sheen.
Thanks for listening to me tonight. My name is Richard Sheen. I live in Dallas. I work for Cafe Max, which formerly, until just a few months ago, was located on Midway Road in the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District. And what I wanted to talk about for just a moment tonight was the aggregation of vendor contract amounts. This is specifically, I'm not a lawyer, Texas Education Code 44.031 and 032, where people want to order out pizza. We do salads, but they want something catered in for lunch for teachers. And in the last 10 or 15 years, things have become harder and harder just to make a simple purchase like that. And so that's what I wanted to talk about. The state law requires that purchasing rules be followed, and we try as much as possible to do those things. And as the years go by, it's getting harder and harder. They aggregate the total amount, making it a contractual obligation, and then they call up the next paragraph, which is basically saying you can't put all the contracts together to avoid or to make a loophole for it. So kind of what I was hoping to do was to just make you all aware of it. I don't know if the purchasing departments have raised any of the issues, saying how difficult it is to get vendors to sign up for providing food for the teachers. And just so you know, that it's out there. So thank you very much.
Next up, Ms. Mary Lovell.
Good evening. My name is Mary Lovell. I live at 1307 Barrington Drive in Capel, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. At the outset, I must share that I am not directly opposed to term limits for school board trustees, but presently, I believe it's a solution in search of a problem. What's the "why"? Good trustees must invest significant amounts of personal time and often funds to fulfill their duties. The state even requires CPEs of our trustees. To the extent that a member's opportunity to stand for an election is artificially curtailed by term limits, the taxpayer and the trustee's return on their investment is artificially depressed. To me, terms limits also raises more questions presently. What about a trustee who is elected or appointed to fill a vacancy of a trustee? Will they be able to stand for election if that term exceeds the term limit? What if no candidate other than the termed-out trustee chooses to run for election? Also, term limits don't widely exist for federal and state-elected positions, to my knowledge. To me, the ISD seems more akin to a state entity rather than a local city position, even though state funding is inadequate. It exists by virtue of state law and must follow state and federal policies in almost everything that it does. Finally, the most effective term limit, to me, is a free and open election system for our trustees. Our ISD has elections every year for two or three positions of our trustees. Anyone, everyone who's a registered voter can vote. Often, they don't. But they have the opportunity to exercise their right to term out any of the candidates by their vote, especially under the current system of cumulative voting, where voters across the entire district can clump or lump their votes on a candidate if they really want to get out and if they really want to choose that candidate in lieu of an incumbent. So again, Ms. Edmiston said it, the question is, what's the "why"? I've heard a wonderful presentation Mr. Shackman prepared at the last meeting, but I didn't hear a "why." Thank you.
Next up, the Reverend Willie Rainwater.
To the board and President, thank you for letting me speak for a few minutes, but it took me three minutes to get up here. 75 years old. I don't know what I'm going to do in three minutes. I guess I might as well sit down. Now, I want to bring something to your heart. I don't want to speak to your mind and your eyes. I want to speak to your heart tonight for two minutes. You know, I visited the school. Like I said, I was telling my president that I brought a group of black kids over here, this red building right here at Dewey Prairie, and got turned down and got run off back in 62, trying to integrate them into this school district in 62. Then he went on to tell me that one of the players, once we did get the school integrated, which I was happy he told me that. He'd been here about 40-something years, so he knew the situation. And he went on to tell me, he taken one of the kids back to home, he had to go across the railroad track on the other side of town. So he noticed what I'm going to say, where I'm at. I mean, I got him on my side when I found out just a few minutes ago. Then Ms. Bailey got up and made a great presentation to everybody that we can use in our community. And my problem, what I'm trying to say to you guys, we need to start operating from our heart about the Afro-American family and Afro-American kids. We got a problem. And I'm 75 years old and kind of feel like I could be part of the problem because I brought kids to be integrated into this community, into this system. But we're behind. After 55 years, we never caught up. And nobody not saying nothing about these kids, cannot read, nobody not saying nothing about these families that we have in our community with all this money we got, all these grants I hear we talk about. Nobody hasn't said about anything that I hear, they pouring no money off into these Afro-Americans families and kids. I'm speaking for them because I know that we are hurting. And if one of you guys, let's take three, six of y'all, and we got the president to be over it. If we adopt just one, three families that called the school, found out where a problem is. You take a family, you take a family, you take a family, and spend time with their family and get to learn their family, you turn around and dismiss them on their family. Invite that poor family to your house, in your nice house, feed them a meal, and let them know that you love him. Teach them how to read. Once you see the improvement, then what you do, you come back to the board and say, "I want to bring this family up here." With VIP? I got a VIP. I got a black Afro-American family VIP that I want to bring up here to this board that's been behind and got caught in the system. Somebody got to start working on the system. I've been working for years, but my time is almost up. We're on 75. I won't be here much longer. But everybody looking and playing like everything's okay. Everything's not okay. We got a problem in the Afro-American families. We got money that we can pour in to help these poor kids. I'm talking to your heart. I don't want, I'm not talking to your mind and your eyes. It's time for somebody in the heart coming to your heart. Let's do something about it. Thank you.
Next up, I hope I pronounced this correctly, Clarissa Deowa?
Deowa.
Deowa?
You get an A for effort.
Okay.
Good evening, board members. I'm a resident of Carrollton, mother of a future student of CFB ISD, and a wife of an immigrant. I fully support the welcoming resolution and would be proud if the board took the stance of unequivocally supporting all of its students in this manner. The word "school" has different meanings to different students that reaches far beyond merely a place to learn. For some, it is a haven in a cruel world, a warm meal when the cupboards are bare at home, stability when home life is uncertain, and a place of acceptance. In recent years, the current climate has allowed for the ostracization of the other with Muslim bans, bathroom bills, the uncertain future of the DACA program. To think that these adult issues don't trickle down into the lives of CFB ISD students is a fallacy. By committing CFB ISD to the welcoming resolution, you would give peace of mind to your diverse student body and their families by providing safe spaces for them to learn and just be kids, even if it's for a few precious hours out of the day. Every school day, parents entrust you to take care of their most precious gift. I sincerely ask that you support the welcoming resolution. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
And we have another, John Delorme.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Board members. My name is John Delorme. I reside at 6643 Daleon Street, Irving, Texas 75039. I am president of Villas of Vicina Los Colinas Homewoman Association. On behalf of myself and the 145 homes I represent, I can answer the question "why" on the term limits. It is because through the elections for our school board trustees, we have elected a majority of this Board, Ms. Valenzuela, Mr. Ramos, Mr. Shackman, and Mr. Fleming, who campaigned and said their platforms supported term limits. So that's why. The voters have elected a majority of trustees on this Board that support term limits. That's why. And we expect the trustees that were elected through the election process to stick to their platforms and give us the opportunity to vote for term limits. That's why. We elected a majority of the Board for term limits. We expect them to fulfill their campaign platforms. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now proceed to our next agenda item, number five, Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the Board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all consent agenda items, and the Board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the Consent Agenda, Board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda at this time?
Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Ramos.
I'm going to recuse myself with regards to Consent Agenda Item 5P, Consider Approval of Purchase of Dellcom Services. So I'm not sure if you want to pull that one, so that one can be voted on separately, but I will be recusing myself on that issue.
Yes, we will. Pull Item P.
P is in Paul.
Okay. Any others, Board members? Okay. I need a motion. Ms. Klein.
Matthews, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
As presented, and remove Item P as in Paul for a separate vote.
Okay. I have a motion, Ms. Klein. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that motion.
I have a second from Mr. Fleming. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? That motion carries. Yes. Item number P, do I have a motion? Mr. Shackman.
I'll give you a motion then. I move that we adopt Item P from the Consent Agenda, Consider Approval of Purchase of Dellcom Services.
I have a motion from Mr. Shackman. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Robachek. All those in favor, raise your hand. That motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Mr. Ramos? One recusal, mom. Six in favor, one recusal, for the record. Our next agenda item is number six, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board of Trustees Pre-Meeting Briefing Held August 3, 2017. Board members, this is marked for action. Do I have a motion regarding this item? Ms. Klein.
I'll make a motion to approve Item 6, Consider Approval of Minutes of the Board of Trustees Pre-Meeting Briefing Held August 3.
I have a motion from Ms. Klein. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Robachek. All those in favor, raise your hand. That motion carries. Our next agenda item is number seven, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board Trustees Regular Meeting Held August 3, 2017. Board members, this item is marked for action. Do I have a motion? Mr. Fleming?
I'd like to make a motion that we consider approval of minutes of Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Held August 3, 2017.
I have a motion from Mr. Fleming. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Valenzuela. Any discussion, Board members? All those in favor, raise your hand. That motion carries. Our next agenda item is number eight, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board of Trustees Special Meeting Held August 24, 2017. Board members, this item is also marked for action. Do I have a motion? Ms. Valenzuela?
Approve the minutes of Board of Trustees Special Meeting Held August 24, 2017.
I have a motion from Ms. Valenzuela. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Shackman. Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion carries. Now, Board members, I have received a request to change the order of agenda items number nine and number 10. As stipulated in Board Policy BE Local, quote, "The order in which posted agenda items are taken may be changed by consensus of Board members." I ask you, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, is there a consensus to change the order?
They're both still happening, right?
They're still gonna vote, and this is just to change the order. Okay. We will go now to item number 10. Board members, we will now move to agenda item number 10, Board of Trustees Discussion Regarding Term Limits. Board members, last month, we began a discussion about term limits. I instructed staff to accumulate any materials related to term limits. Each of you have a folder in front of you that includes the presentation from last month as well as answers to questions posed by Board Member Nancy Klein. As we continue our discussion on this topic, staff will continue to add documents to the binder. Many relevant questions arose last month. We would like to continue our conversation this evening. At this time, I want each of you, each Board member, to add any additional questions you may have about term limits. And I want you to think about this for a second or two before I call on you. Any additional questions you may have about term limits? And let me remind you, this is not a debate, okay? I'm gonna start on this end. Mr. Ramos, any additional questions you might have?
I do. Like, what would happen, I think it was Mary Lovell, and one of the comments that she made was, and it's a good question, is what happens if no one runs? I think that's something we need to look at and discuss, that what if no one runs and the person that is, the incumbent is termed out?
Okay. That's a good question.
The answer to that question is, if no one ran, the Board appoints. Legally, that's the way that that works. I mean, you face the same obstacle if you have any seat and, for whatever reason, you don't have candidates that run.
Ms. Ramos, do you have any other questions?
The other thing is, in the proposal that we were looking at, is what happens if someone is appointed? So if someone is appointed, what would that process entail? Do you have any kind of suggestions, any, any kind of guidance on which procedure you suggest or moving forward with an appointment?
He's looking at me. Since I brought this up, I'll go ahead.
Sounds like something for staff to look into, to me.
Something that staff would need to look at. I assume someone is writing down these questions over here. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Ramos? Mr. Shackman, any additional questions you might have?
No questions, other than the reminder that the education code is very clear. I appreciated Ms. Klein bringing up last meeting the question about home rule cities. We are a very unique trustee style of governance, and we, because we are trustees in the state of Texas, have been given, quote, "exclusive power," and we've given the right to adopt our own rules and bylaws. And then no lesser authority, the Texas Supreme Court has ruled on how that gets determined as they work with the structure of looking at things when they actually spelled out. And I'd be happy to provide the sites on all of this, that they accept the wording as the legislature put it together. So the bottom line is, we have every right to bring term limits as policy if we choose to do that. I would point out, just as a point of study, and I have had the opportunity, this has been an issue that I've been concerned about for a long time. I've spent two years doing some pretty significant research. I've prepared a white paper on it that, again, I'd be happy for anybody to get. It's fully documented and researched. It's in the hands of a number of attorneys and a number of legislators in the state, and everybody's giving it thumbs up. The one thing that I would point out is that while we certainly could have, and I would encourage us to use a referendum to gauge community support, we would never ask the community to vote for term limits. That is a decision to be made by a Board, and the Board has the responsibility to do that. So we could use the information from a referendum, and then we could adopt policies. We tonight changed and adopted policies that were updates to our policy. We don't use a home rule charter. We don't have citizens vote on charter and things like that. So it is something that if the citizens were to approve it in a referendum and there was a significant group out there, we have the right then to enact that and bring that about.
Ms. Valenzuela, your turn.
So, according to the legislators and some of the attorneys, we have the, if we were to choose to vote on it, the authority to act on the way that we elect trustees?
That is my understanding, yes.
Do we have much of a history of doing this before this? In other words, has the Board modified elections?
Historically, we have, because we changed it from traditional voting to cumulative voting. Yeah.
That's all the questions?
Ms. Robachek.
I have two. In, it's on. In this data, is the additional information that was referenced, is that gonna provide answers in item number Q and the answer A about us contacting the Secretary of State 1 and 2 and contacting TASB Legal? Do we, did y'all do that?
Yeah, some of that. I'll let Ms. Tillman kind of tell you where we are in that. And Mr. Matthews said it was about really making sure we've got all the questions on the table so we can put it comprehensively. Ms. Tillman has done some extensive research already.
Well, if that's part of the later discussion, that's fine. I just didn't know if it would be answered, you know, as part of that.
No, we did contact TASB with answering the question as to whether or not another district had adopted Board policy, or if they were aware of any district in Texas that had attempted to adopt policy. And our response from our TASB consultant was a suggestion that we indeed contact the Secretary of State as well as TASB Legal Counsel, but I didn't want to take that action unless the Board had requested that we do that.
Okay. That's it right now, actually.
Mr. Matthews says, because we use a lot of acronyms in the school business, right? So, TASB is Texas Association of School Boards, which is, provides services to school boards in the state of Texas regarding policy development, board training, and those kind of things. So they are certainly a valid place for us to get information because they serve the whole state, so.
Mr. Fleming?
My main question was, are there any other school districts that currently have term limits? And I see that the answer is no. Looks like Walsh, Diego's kind of defined that for us. I've been reading up on term limits and home rules and trying to figure out if there's something that we were to do, how would we go about it? So I am about almost convinced, but I am open to more discussion to see what's the right approach and if this is something that we can do. I'm done, sir.
Ms. Klein?
Well, I prepared a little presentation with my questions and my wonderments because I have still more questions, and I don't want to criticize Ms. Tillman, but some of my questions weren't clear last month, and then they're still on the table. And so I'm gonna highlight for everybody kind of where I am. Part of it is, you have to live with me. I'm an engineer. And the other part is, I'm an engineer with city experience. So I kind of have seen both sides of the table when it comes to city government and also school districts. So my questions are, why term limits? I guess that goes back to Dr. Burns' why. I think every minute counts, and I'm probably using up more minutes than I should. What is the purpose and what is the goal? I think, for me, it would be to improve diversity on our school board and to reflect our population as best we can. Have we done that? Does it, okay, so Nancy's reminder to herself, does it contribute to CFB's goal, high achievement for each student? I would ask the Board, does it help us reach our goal, having term limits? Is it something that we've learned at school board training that's important? Is it something we know as people that will help high achievement? I think it also will be our next agenda item. That's another question I have, is, does that? And that's kind of how I base everything I look at. So the August presentation says our constituents have spoken. I believe they have in the last two elections. I think the cumulative voting, I kind of like to refer to it as a unicorn. It's just kind of a little unusual, and I think we are the only school district in the state doing cumulative voting. That would be another question for whoever's taking questions. But, I think it's the city in Amarillo. So, I would be curious. I do see that we're kind of a unicorn, and that kind of might be in Frank Shore's memory. But I wonder if we want to be a unicorn twice, or does it make us kind of too ugly? So, the next question, term limits could possibly promote minority representation on the Board. That's why City of Dallas went with term limits. But it would exclude Mr. Fleming from running again. Is this what is good for CFB ISD? He may want to run again. We don't know. But, but he's got no poker face today. So cumulative voting has a proven record of success in engaging voters. I think we can agree on that. So cities and CFB, Mr. Shackman told us that most of them have term limits. Carrollton has two, three-year terms. Farmers Branch, and if anybody here thinks I'm wrong, please tell me, two, three-year terms. Addison has two, three-year terms. Dallas has four, two-year terms, but school districts are not allowed to have two-year terms. We have to have three-year terms or four-year terms, so we can't be like Dallas, and I know that disappoints us all. Irving has, another weird one, three, three-year terms. And then Capel lets the voters decide tenure, like kind of Ms. Lovell said. My question, and I haven't figured this out, Ms. Tillman, is, were these decisions taken to the voters? I lived here when Carrollton went to term limits. I don't think there was an election or ratification or anything. I think term limits were just adopted. So I'm curious, did they take them to the voters? How did that work? I really don't think anybody did. That's just my feeble recollection. So please help me gather. I kind of did a lot of internet searches and got tired of reading charters and things. Are cities' experiences relevant to CFB ISD? I like to compare it to kind of, how is a cow like a horse? I don't know which one's a cow and which one's a horse, but are cities like a school district? How are our six local cities organized and structured? The answer, most of them all have strong, they all have strong city manager council form of government. There are a lot of options for cities to choose. Dallas has actually pursued internally and externally a strong mayor form of government, which is very different than what they currently have. But how is a school district organized? But how is a school district organized and structured? Well, we're told by the state how we're organized and structured. We have a superintendent and a board of trustees, because the state told us to, and they told us how many to have. And they told us our terms must be three or four years, and they told us after, like, 1995, we can't change it ever again. So, we are, unlike Carrollton and places that can say, we're going to switch the way our terms work, and we're going to have different elections, we're kind of like told what we're going to do. So, more questions? What is a home rule city? Richard's been investigating. Do you want to? I'll tell you. Can pass any regulations or laws it deems necessary unless the state law prohibits it in order, oh, am I not on here? Oh, no. They gave me this fancy gadget, and I didn't use it. Okay. In order for a city to be, that's when you're digital, no, analog, not digital, that's what I am. In order for a city to be home rule, the population has to reach 5,000, and there has to be an election ratifying a city charter. Terry Lynn and Farmers Branch kept asking me for our charter. We don't have a charter. Nobody has a charter that's an ISD. I couldn't understand why he was asking me for my charter, but after reading a lot of charters on the internet, now I kind of get what they all elaborate about. Can an ISD be home rule? Y'all probably have already figured out the answer. No. How many of the six cities?
Actually, they can. There is, it's in the education code. There is not a home rule city in Texas, or a home rule school district in Texas. Dallas ISD looked at it, and they turned it down.
Well, they looked at being a charter.
No, they turned, looked at being a home rule district. It's in the election code.
It's different than a city home rule, Mr. Shackman.
Yes, it is.
It's not the same subject. It's a different subject.
It is in the education code.
But it's not, it's kind of like a charter school versus a charter for a city. It's a different description of the verb, I mean, of the vocabulary word. So, how many of the six cities are home rule? All six, but over different time periods. You have to wait till you reach 5,000. What is the purpose of a city charter? Most important document for a home rule city, would you agree, mayor die? Does an ISD have one? No. Why doesn't it have one? We just don't get to have one. The state tells us what we can have. Can anyone be selected by council as city manager? Is there a certification process? No. Okay. So, can anyone be selected? Yes. And is there a certification process to be a city manager? No. Can anyone be selected by the board of trustees for superintendent? And is there a certification process for our superintendents in Texas? No, you have to be certified to be a superintendent. And I think, you know, we have a number of employees working that direction. Does the state require continuing education training for city council members? No. Does the state require continued education training for board of trustee members? Yes. Does the state require continued education training for new city council members? No. Does the state require continued education training for new board of trustee members? Yes. Have you figured out we're kind of more tied down to the state than a city is? Does the state require legislative update training after each legislative session meets for city council members? Richard?
No.
Does the state require legislative update training after each legislative session meets for board of trustee members? Three hours. Yes. Does the city set the tax rate? And I did learn by reading my, all my stuff online, is that they do have a maximum of $2.50 per $100. So, but they do set pretty much any tax rate they choose. Is an ISD allowed to set the tax rate? What is the maximum allowed by the state? No, we're really dictated by the state. Our maximum is $1.17 per $100, but our bond obligations gives us a little more flexibility on top of that. But we're pretty much controlled by the state on all of our financing and how we do things. Does the city get to keep the tax increases from increased property tax valuations? For now, yes. The state talked about taking that away or capping it. Is an ISD allowed to retain tax increases collected from increased property tax valuations for just M and O? No, only temporarily. We get to kind of hold on to it long enough to feel good, and then we have to give it back. So, is a city subject to recapture? I bet you don't even use that term. Is an ISD subject to recapture? Yes, we are. Does the state require a city to have a team of eight training for three hours annually? Mayor die? No. We get to have a team of eight training every year for three hours because we need to be better at teaming, right?
Absolutely.
So, there's a lot of things that really vary between this horse and this cow. How does a city vary from an ISD? General law cities are smaller cities that have not become home rule cities. Their powers are limited. They operate according to specific state statutes that define their power and duties. They are restricted to doing what the state directs or permits them to do. So, where does an ISD, oh, home rule cities have the reverse position of general law cities. Home rule cities look to the state constitution and state statutes to determine what they may not do, and they can do anything else. Powers include inherent powers, and there's a long definition for that, the ability to unilaterally annex once you reach a certain population, which is condemnation and all these other things, many other things that cities are allowed to do. Recent instances where the state considered to reduce cities' powers, well, they did take away fracking bans two years ago. They considered reducing city tax increases this year. They really looked at controlling what cities can do about chickens in people's yards, because that's important for the state to manage. And I don't know if they passed tree ordinances for the state because they didn't like the way cities were governing trees being removed or not. So, what can, how does a city vary from the ISD? So, subdivisions of the state. And that's where you get to what is everybody else that's not lucky enough to be a home rule city. You've got counties, school districts. The counties really don't have much power. They can't do as much at all as the home rule cities. Other districts, like water districts, and then Parkland is a hospital district, can only do things they are specifically authorized to do by the state. The ISD cannot collect a sales tax. We wish we could, but cities can. We cannot run a bus system. We can't adopt a tree ordinance or a chicken ordinance. Our responsibility is really all in the education code, and it's all about managing schools. Chapter 11 is headed about school districts. It has subchapters that Mr. Shackman referenced. Subchapter A is general provisions, and it's like this long, not very hard to read. Subchapter B is bigger. It talks about independent school districts and where Mr. Shackman's references came from in the August board meeting, were subchapter C and D. It's strange, they're headed very similarly, Board of Trustees of Independent School District, General Provisions, and Powers and Duties of the Board of Trustees of Independent School District. So, I decided I had nothing better to do but to read all of this. So, one thing about the August presentation where there's some incorrect references, it was kind of confusing. There were about six slides that referenced 11.051A and B and subchapter D, but it was really 11.151. And then the meaning of the sentences had words topped out that, to me, omitted key words and took it out of context from what the code was referencing. So, more concerns, so 11.5.1. So, I went ahead and copied all, whoop, let's go back and look at that. So, I copied the whole thing, and really what 11.051A and B says is, this is what the board does. And that whole subchapter C tells us everything about elections. It talks about cumulative voting. It talks about single-member districts. It talks about having a student member on our board that can't vote. That would be interesting. It talks about 25,000 things we could do to do with elections. It talks about how we operate our elections, how we run the elections, how we tally the votes, how we register people to run for election. That is all in subchapter C. So, Mr. Shackman's thing references 11.051, it's 151, and he talks about the trustees as a body corporate have, blah, blah, blah. That is in subchapter D. So, I went ahead and just put all of subchapter D up here. Whoop, there it goes. And it talks about, really, the trustees of an independent school district constitute a body corporate, and the name of the district may acquire and hold real and personal property, sue and be sued, and receive bequests and donations or other monies or funds coming legally into their hands. And really, if you read this subchapter D, most of the subchapter is not anything, it has nothing to do with elections. It has to do with a lot of what we do, is we tell the superintendent what we want him to do, and it's, seek to establish a working relationship, adopt a vision statement and comprehensive goals, establish performance goals, the academic and fiscal performance indicators of C, D, and J, any performance indicators adopted by the district, ensure that the superintendent is accountable, and it goes on and on. And it's really just about how we dictate what Dr. Burns does. So, more, the, we conduct, the only thing it references elections is, we conduct elections as required by law. And then we, it goes on into how we hire employees, how we issue bonds, how we levy taxes, how we employ people. But it's really, subchapter T doesn't really have, D does not really have anything to do with elections. So, are term limits effective? I found an article while I was searching the internet that says, here's why the city of Dallas's council term limits are a joke. Dallas has found it hasn't really caused the turnover that they were looking for. My other observation is six years is the usual timeframe. My question, why, is, do you need both cumulative voting and term limits? Isn't it kind of redundant with the goal of trying to increase our representation of minorities on the board? Have we already found a successful method? And then, let's look at what Austin thinks about what we're doing. Legislation has been introduced the last three sessions over six years and has not been passed. The legislature has spoken. They had a chance. They did not act for six years. During the 2017 legislative session, the Texas legislature did not pass any bills that would give the district the ability to set term limits. There were four bills submitted this year, but all bills failed. Failed bills this session include House Bill 154, House Bill 930, Senate Bill 110, Senate Bill 1884. So, a little interesting, two tidbits to do with the two bills introduced in the Senate that address term limits for political subdivisions, including school districts. One section of Senate Bill 1884 would have amended the Texas Education Code to add a provision that would enable a school board to impose term limits by adopting a resolution for saying by two-thirds vote of the board. So, I put that out there as food for thought. Have we thought about what percentage of the board would need to vote for it for it to go through? Senate Bill 1884 was referred to the Education Committee, but no hearing was held. But that is what State Senator Huffines introduced. That was his proposal. And he is one of our state senators for CFB. House Bill 930 was introduced by Representative Fallon from Frisco. It made it to the Public Education Committee. It was basically identical to the one introduced by Representative Simmons. However, it was left pending in committee. House Bill 154, while referred to the Public Education Committee, never received a hearing in committee. The hearing on House Bill 930, and this is what I really want to emphasize, and this is what Ms. Tillman has in her handout today, as well as many other bills, was held on April 27, 2017. At the public hearing, Representative Fallon spoke in support of the bill stating it was about local control and giving districts the same authority and flexibility as cities. I would say, oh, Lord, don't we wish? We are very jealous. Can we just really have that flexibility? So, when questioned by one of the committee members about district authority to do this under current law, Representative Fallon stated, they, school boards, cannot do it, term limits, now. So, that makes me ask the question, why? So, legislation has been introduced the last three sessions and has not passed. They spoke. They had a chance. They did not act. When questioned by one of the committee members about the district authority to do this, Representative Fallon, who's Frisco and Little Elm, stated, they cannot do it now. They have all sorts of research and advice that we don't have. Why are we considering this after what the state representative said and what the state legislature has said? If the term limits are allowed and voted on, do we send it to the voters? And that's kind of what I'm wondering what cities have done. What amount of time? Six years is pretty much the standard. Why not choose cumulative voting or term limits? They both accomplish, to me, the same purpose. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Klein, thank you. Okay, board members, each of you who had opportunity to raise some questions. What I've heard from everyone is that we still have some questions that need to be answered. And I feel like and hope that the administration has taken note of all this and hoping that we can resolve some of these questions in the near future. For my two cents worth, I think Ms. Klein touched on a number of important things, but one thing that I thought about even before her presentation, in my opinion, cumulative voting does, in fact, work to meet, you know, and I'm just going to have to use this as an example. One of our most outstanding board members in the history of this school district in a long-term incumbent, 15 or 18 years, Dr. Burns, how many, how long was James Good here? 15-year board member, one of the most outstanding board members ever, was up for reelection last year. He should have been a lock, but with our cumulative voting, Ms. Valenzuela, who, and I don't mean this in a negative way, I promise, basically came out of nowhere and beat James Good like a drum, okay, because of cumulative voting. And I believe she's going to turn out to be a pretty good board member. So, that's my two cents worth.
Mr. Manthi, I would say that was what we hoped for when we adopted cumulative voting.
Exactly.
Was a little more excitement, a little more interest. Is that a unicorn? But, you know, the question is, how many unicorns does one school district need?
Exactly.
And I want to add that cumulative voting was the method. Candace was elected because she made the effort to get out there and inform people about her passion for it.
That's right.
And that's what also elections do when a candidate wants to be involved or wants to serve in something as specialized, I think, as a school board, who you would have to have a passion for students or schools. You have to make that note.
I didn't intend to sound like.
I know you didn't, but I wanted to clarify.
She worked her tail off to get elected, and she was successful in doing so. But so did James. James worked his tail off, too. So, the people spoke. Candace won.
I'd like to speak to Ms. Klein. I think you made a comment regarding term limits not making it down at the legislative. I don't think term limits will never get out of the House or the Senate, and that's because of money. That's because of, you know, the big education groups donating to these lawmakers. And so, that'll never happen in our lifetime. I can almost promise you that.
Mr. Manthi, that was interesting, because in discussion with Representative Acock, who was not this term, but prior term, the chairman of the Public Education Committee in the House, and speaking to his office, I was told point-blank, term limits were dead on arrival because Tasby and TASSA lobby, they're the sixth and seventh largest lobbying groups in the state. If you put them together, they're the second-largest lobbying group in the state. And I hasten to say, while it's good to get information from Tasby, they're biased. They have printed materials that are out there, and it is the only place I could find material that says term limits are illegal in Texas. In their board training materials, it says, term limits, state law, no term limitations, state law. That's what they say. And they don't cite any documentation for that. I appreciate Ms. Klein's great work. You did a super job of explaining to us the difference between cities and schools, and that's why the legislature, in their wisdom, gave us trustees and said, trustees, you have the power to govern and manage your district. I apologize, there were a couple of typos that a friend of mine, when they were building a PowerPoint, did, they inverted some numbers on a couple of pieces of that. It was a little complicated, but the content was the same, even though there were a couple of number inversions. The fact of the matter is, the communities have overwhelmingly asked us for term limits. Cumulative voting does not replace term limits. A lot of folks in our community are asking for us to dump cumulative voting. We've done nothing to look and see. I think we say it works from the standpoint of the elections happen and we see people get elected. I don't know that there's any satisfaction out there in the process where people get to cast two and three votes for a single person. And I would like for us, as a board, to take a look at that. We said after it had been out there for a couple of years, we would look. We've had it for two years. And yes, there is. And yes, there is a home rule school district. I think it's Education Code 12.003, Ms. Klein. It is a home rule district. You can be a home rule district if you're, and nobody in Texas has done that either, in addition to nobody has ever had term limits. That's right, they haven't. We used to say, "We're an innovator in learning, and I'm ready for us to be an innovator and lead in this state." The community has asked, the community wants us to move forward with this. I don't want to go to our community and ask them to support us with a bond if we're not going to be willing to listen to them and some of the other things that they're asking us about. And it's very significant. The Texas law is clear, we are not a city, never will be. We have a trustee form of government, and we certainly have the opportunity, if we choose, we could, with a simple four-three vote tonight, put term limits in our-- I would suggest that wouldn't be the expedient thing to do. I would suggest that we would get a referendum from our community and see if they want to do such a thing. I would love to see us appoint a committee of three board members to come back with a report that would suggest the type of term limits. I suggested maybe three years, three terms of three years. It's not my idea, it needs to be ours. One of the other things that the legislature made very clear is that we trustees act as a body corporate, and we need to all be involved in that thinking. There are a number of pieces about that that we could come together. But I would like to see us, as, you know, as a board, say, "We're going to take a referendum to our community in this coming May election," and let them give us some response.
Anyone else? Ms. Klein?
My main question still remains for Ms. Tillman. Why does the legislature feel like we don't have the power? And Mr. Shackman thinks we do, so I'm just confused.
Well, Rob Isler, in 2009, who was the head of the Education Committee at that time, said, "Not only do we, but we have it." It's been affirmed, the power by several of our Attorney Generals, and I think that you will find as you work through it, that it is there. I think Mr. Fallon is mistaken when he says the power is not there.
Board members, again, we've raised some very good questions. I would hope that the administration will delve into these questions and get back to us with some answers expediently. This, this item is marked for action. Do I have a motion for this item?
Is that motion--
For administration.
What are the questions that we're continuing, that we're directing admin to investigate?
To continue the discussion and come up with answers to the questions that were raised here tonight.
And-- Someone was taking-- Contact of the secretaries--
Yes.
Going forward and getting legal--
Ms. Tillman's been taking copious notes over there.
It's going to be interesting to talk to the Secretary of State, I believe that's Ken Paxton, and the first person to ever put--
Attorney General.
Yeah, I apologize, the Attorney General. So Secretary of State might give us a different answer, but Mr. Paxton was the first person to ever put a term limits bill in for school boards. It was in 2009.
I think Secretary of State is Carrasco.
You're right, you're right.
Again, do I have a motion?
And again, what is the motion?
I don't think you need a motion to direct staff--
To continue researching.
Well, the item is marked for action.
Mr. Matthews, if I can--
Move to a next meeting.
As Ms. Klein said, if the board's direction is for the staff to continue to accumulate information regarding this subject, then we can do that, you know, after that formal action. You could, if you wanted to. I think the intent of marking it action would be if something came out of the discussion that you wanted to take action on, then you have it marked. But you certainly don't have to. But you have the ability, because marking that way gives you more flexibility. I think we have our direction, and that's to continue to be a supplier of information to the board, and I would add that you would want this on again for continued discussion. That would be also our direction.
Do we need to vote on that, or not? We don't?
I don't think you need to vote unless you wanted to. The only reason you need to vote is if you want to take something that a board member has, is they want to propose to the rest of the board members regarding this.
Correct.
Any other comments, board members? Then so be it. We direct the administration to come back to us so we can continue this discussion as soon as possible.
We'll do our diligence to have the item, some of the information that you have presented with the questions, the answers we can get, again, depending on availability of the people we need to get hold of, but we will shoot for having it on the October agenda. That will be our goal.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Burns. Now, the board will address Agenda Item Number Nine. Remember, we reversed them. Discuss and consider possible action on welcoming resolution for students of Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. Board Member Ms. Valenzuela requested this item be placed on the agenda, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Valenzuela.
The board members all have a copy of the resolution, and if you would like to see it, it's also available on our website. Let me talk a little bit about why. I think a welcoming resolution is necessary. Yes, sir?
Would you, would you like to--
Sure.
Could you read it?
I could absolutely read it first, if you'd like that, before the discussion.
I want to make sure that all-- That's all.
All right. That's reasonable. So this is a resolution to designate all Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District schools as welcoming and protective to the fullest extent of the law. Whereas, the United States Supreme Court held in Plyler versus Doe in 1982 that no public school district has a basis to deny children access to education based on their immigration status, citing the harm it would inflict on the child and society itself and the equal protection rights of the Fourteenth Amendment. And, whereas, the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement's policy states that it will not conduct immigration enforcement activity at any sensitive location, including on school property, at educated-related activities or events, and at marked or known bus stops during periods when children are present at the stop unless exigent circumstances exist, other law enforcement actions have led officers to the location or with prior approval from a designated supervisory official. And, whereas, under federal and state law, no local public school district, such as Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, has the authority to determine the immigration status of any of its students or families, or assist in enforcing federal immigration laws. And, whereas, Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees embraces the diversity of our students and families, and the rich language and cultural assets they bring to our district, and strongly supports and encourages the participation of all parents and families in our schools. And, whereas, Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees is committed to following the law and providing a high-quality education to all students regardless of their immigration status, ethnicity, national origin, language, race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, disability, or socioeconomic status. And, whereas, Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District is committed to providing a learning environment that facilitates the physical safety and emotional well-being of each student. And, whereas, Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District has adopted policies that prohibit discrimination, including harassment against any student on the basis, on any basis protected by law that creates an intimidating, threatening, hostile, or offensive educational environment. Whereas, Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District recognizes that a safe and civil environment is needed for students to learn and attain high academic standards and to promote healthy human relationships. And, whereas, Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District is committed to high achievement for each student. And, whereas, there have been increasing instances of students within our district expressing anxiety and fear of them or their family members being deported. And, whereas, Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, through its policies and practices, has made a commitment to a quality education for all students, which includes a safe and stable learning environment. Whereas, in order to provide school environments that are conducive to learning as possible, every Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District campus must be designated as welcoming and protective of all students and their families to the fullest extent of the law. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees declares that every Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District campus is welcoming and protective of all its students and their families to the fullest extent of the law. And, resolved further, that Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District is unequivocally committed to ensuring a school environment that is as conducive to learning as possible for all students and will facilitate each student's physical safety and emotional well-being. And, resolved further, that Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to continue to ensure that students are aware of opportunities to gain access to college, in-state tuition, financial aid, scholarships, internships, and career opportunities regardless of their immigration status. And, resolved further, that nothing in this resolution shall be construed to require an employee or agent of Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District to take any action in violation of federal or state law. So let me talk a little bit about this in plainer English. I know a lot can get lost in the wherlasses. So, the reason, the reason that I brought this up, that we brought this up actually, is that we're all aware of some of the increasing anxiety, particularly of certain populations, particularly as state and federal law enforcement shifts its policy from focusing on serious criminals to a more comprehensive policy. This has created a state of panic for many of our students, for many of our parents. I'm aware of instances where parents are actually taking separate vehicles to church just in case mom or dad may not make it back. I actually just read a letter this morning from a young lady who wakes up incredibly early to get herself to school, and she, after school, leaves and she works a part-time job, and basically the only thing that she wants to do is grow up and contribute, continue to contribute to her family. She already uses the money she makes after school to contribute to household expenses. But on top of all of the things that she has to deal with, which is the standard academics of being, you know, a teenager, and having to deal with, you know, her job, she's, she's dealing with poverty, and she's dealing with the possibility that now she might have to go back to Mexico. With regards to ICE and SB4 and DACA, within the community, I've been hearing a lot of misinformation about the role that the schools play, and specifically, there's been misinformation out there about CFB ISD. CFB ISD does not discriminate. It is our constitutional and moral obligation to offer a safe and welcoming learning environment to all students. We do not share your personal information with any entity outside of the district, and we do not allow any uninvited law enforcement entity to set foot on our campus without a warrant. Telling parents all of this, making this absolutely clear to parents, actually works toward our, one of our objectives, which is to improve the learning environment. As you probably understand, many of you as parents, many of you as educators, scared kids don't learn very well. And parents who are worried about the existential well-being of their family aren't very supportive in terms of education. It's, they have other priorities. We have no control over federal entities. We have no control over state entities, because obviously, we'd probably do funding a little differently. But, we do have control over the emotional well-being in our students insofar as that we can reassure them that the learning environment that they go to every single day is still safe, that we want them, that there's not a moment at which the teacher or principal or anyone else is going to turn around and say, "Yep, that's him, take him out of here." And it seems unfathomable to some of us, because we care so much about the students, and we care so much about the district that any child would think that. But, at this point, with so many things floating around, it's, it's hard not to know, it's hard to know what entity is going to roll over and crush you from any day to day. And I know that there aren't a lot of phone calls coming into the district, but if you see it from their perspective, if you're afraid that the school district is going to turn on you, would you be the first parent to call up and say, "Hey, I'm really afraid of ICE coming in and taking my kids, so are you going to do that?" It's something that's really counterintuitive, particularly to populations that are used to just kind of having to take what conditions come with the prevailing atmosphere. As someone who's grown up in an environment like that, I can certainly identify, and I know that people have sensed that about me and have confided in me as well. And I want to make sure that they know unequivocally where we stand in terms of caring about and educating their students and following the laws, following the Constitution, right? So we are obligated to educate students under the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. So, I would invite all of you to reassure the students and to reassure the parents that our kids are wanted, they're safe, and they're welcome, that we want high achievement for each and every student in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, no, no.
I insist.
You mean flip a card, or what?
Doesn't matter. Candace and I, we've, we've worked on this, and at the end of the day, what we're asking with this resolution doesn't really change anything that we're already doing, or not doing, I should say, okay? One of the reasons we have wanted to move forward with this resolution is, at the end of the day, what we are doing, it may not get to the parents, it may not get to the kids. What we're trying to do is disseminate that information to the public to let them know what's going on, that our kids, our kids, Dr. Burns, feel protected in our schools. Dr. Burns, the administration has done a good job of letting the schools know what their rights are as principals if someone comes into our district. Unfortunately, though, those parents and those kids may not know that, okay? At the end of the day, that Supreme Court case decided that they have a right to an education regardless of what a child's immigration status may be, period. As an attorney, some of the things that I've seen in my office, I've had families come in wanting to have some sort of a backup plan as to, in case the parents are deported. These are realities, these are fears that these children are living with day in, day out. They have plans with phone numbers for family members, they have powers of attorneys that are set up that are safeguarded in a place. They live with this reality, and we want to reassure these children so they can focus once they're here, that they're in a safe environment, and they can focus on what they're here to do, which is high achievement for every student. Mr. Fleming?
First of all, thank you all for y'all's comments. My question, I got a couple of answers, Dr. Burns. Have we changed our policy regarding educating all students? Has anything changed, anything?
No, sir.
Okay. And then, has there been any public situations in our district where students have expressed--
Lost their parents?
Yeah, lost their parents, expressed anxiety, albeit on TV, radio, newspaper, any incidents in our school district?
Well, it's not some data that we would track specifically for that.
Well, it's not some data that we would track specifically for that. But our counselors work really close with our families and then also maintain that confidentiality as well with them. But usually, our staff has a pretty good feel with what's out there and what issues the parents are facing, and then they help them work through them.
Has there been a policy, CFP policy, of requesting kids or parents' immigration status?
No, no, we're not allowed to ask that.
Okay. So we've always been doing this, basically, with this resolution, right?
Correct. So this is not, this, a resolution as a general rule is not a change in policy at all. What it is, is it's affirming our commitment. And that affirmation itself actually serves a purpose.
Got you. I guess when I first read it, I was, because I kind of read it speed reading, so I kind of took it as, as possibly, the perception in the public is, you know, is that maybe CFP hasn't been doing their responsibility or their due diligence in educating all kids. So that's kind of how I looked at it before. But I understand where you got, this is more so a symbolic measure. Am I correct in something? Because we're...
It is more of a symbolic measure. And to answer one of your questions, my thoughts are very similar to what you were, I think it was Randy might have said something about with term limits and TASB, that they're the biggest lobbyists. That's probably one of the reasons that's not moving forward. One of the reasons we may not be hearing from the parents is because they don't want to call. They don't want to draw any attention to themselves.
Ms. Klein? Are you done, Mr. Fleming?
No, I'm not done.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, again, I understand y'all's, I understand the comments and I understand, given it today's time. But I will say that even before the Supreme Court, all the way back to 1977, when I was a student here in the district, you know, we had immigrants in our schools. I know some of my buddies, Jorge Rodriguez was one of them. He was an immigrant from Mexico. Jorge would, he would leave four months out of the year to go up to Idaho, him and his family. They're pick potatoes and other crops. And so since 1977, we've always been a welcoming district. I think that even throughout times, you'd see Jorge tennis shoes or whatever may have holes in them. But what I saw was a community, and I saw teachers that would actually put their monies together to buy them shoes, to do different stuff like that. And that's a community, that's how welcoming was back in 1977. And I had the pleasure of coaching with Jorge Little League Baseball several years back. He and I are still good friends, our kids are friends. And Jorge has about a 15-truck crew, a construction company. And so he, and he gives back to his community. And that's what a welcoming school district does, and that's what a welcoming community does. And so those are the benefits that I saw, CFP being welcoming back in 1977. So we've been doing it before it was required by the Supreme Court. I just thought I'd just throw that off in there. But I do understand in today's climates, kind of what's out there. But I do think that CFP, our core business is educating all kids. And I think they're doing a great job in doing that. It's kind of hard to be all things to everybody, of course. I, you know, my main concern was making sure that this, very supportive of our administration and our staff and our teachers and our principals in the district, right? Because we've, I think they've always been taking care of business as far as taking care of our kids and educating our kids. With today's politics in play, that's neither here or there, we can't control that. But I think our district does a good job in doing what they do, and that's educating kids. I'm done. How about that?
Ms. Klein, did you need?
I was also going to talk about a little more recent history where we were open records requested to turn over the names of any students that we thought weren't legal. And we sent it to the Attorney General's office and we did not cooperate, only because we feel like our obligation is to educate each student high achievement and not about doing that. So the other thing is, we also had protests a number of years ago from people that did not want LULAC volunteering in our schools. And we really don't discriminate on who we allow to mentor in our schools. And we felt like the program they offered with a lot of lawyers. Now, we don't know if we need more lawyers here, but they, there were a lot of lawyers volunteering. And we felt like they took them out and took them to colleges and it was a good program for the kids. The question I have for Dr. Burns is, are we seeing any impacts to our students? Are we noticing any changes? Can we ask our counselors or our principals what's going on?
But I think asking anecdotally would certainly be appropriate because they want to work with the families. We wouldn't track that data and collect it specifically on their situations. So that leaves us with just what data do we have? And that's enrollment data. Right now, after eight days of school, our enrollment is up. And so if we were tracking that data, we would see a positive in that our students are coming. We also, obviously, know we brought pre-K in full day, so that has helped with that enrollment. But that's how we track it, with a piece of data that is acceptable and shareable, if you will. And that is what's in enrollment in our school district. What's it doing? What is it trending over time? And so right now, we're very pleased that we've seen a positive increase in enrollment.
So I was going to talk a minute, if Mr. Matthews would let me, about Senate Bill 4 and how it addresses school districts. And I think Candace is nodding her head. I was relieved when I pulled it up and read it that it does, it says school districts are excluded from the, whatever you would label it, the elimination of sanctuary cities. Because I thought, because Zoom height, I thought that perhaps we were doing this to offset what Senate Bill 4 was accomplishing. So then my worry brain said, whoa, what about those police officers that are in our schools? Might they be doing, you know, serving multiple masters? And then I read in Senate Bill 4 that the police officers that are school resource officers on our campus are exempt from Senate Bill 4 while they're within our properties. So that was interesting to me. So then I asked myself, why do we need this? So, but I was relieved when I read the words in Senate Bill 4. I am worried about the, a couple of words in here. The protective word repeated twice is concerning to me. I think that protection to me might cost more money, might require more effort. That's my concern. That's what, I see it as above what we might currently be doing. Not that we're shirking our duties. But I think that protective of all its students and their families is sort of like, oh, what does that mean? So I'm a little concerned about some of the words. And then the other thing, Ms. Gillon's area, is the last, next to last resolve further says, directs the superintendent to continue to ensure that students are aware of opportunities to gain access to college, in-state tuition, financial aid, scholarships, internships, and career opportunities regardless of their immigration status. I think we do that. I'm worried about being expected to monitor and track, which would require more effort. That is my concern. I think we're doing it, but there might be some slip by, just like, okay, so maybe it's an email and they don't read the email. Or, you know, how is that information disseminated? I'm curious about the amount of effort to make sure we do these things. The other thing I would ask is, Dr. Burns, what is our current effort that we're doing? Are we trying to communicate? I know Chief Redden, or whatever his fancy title is, what is he?
Executive chief.
Executive chief, has been going out and visiting churches. What is the school district doing to try to, okay, so this is like deja vu, free and reduced lunch. I don't need another presentation. I know it's hard to reach all the parents, but what are we doing? And what could, more could we do or should we do, is the question?
Yes.
I'll give you the big answer to that. And then obviously, staff has a lot of specific details. As one is, you know, all of our campuses hold parent meetings. Many now hold them off-site because parents are sometimes more comfortable going to their own apartment, community room, or whatever it is, versus coming to the school. So we do some outreach at that level. We've done some things through Communications Department. Ms. Brown and her group, going along with the Carrollton people to just explain to them where their, what their rights are and how they can get in school, how they enroll in school, et cetera. So we try to go to them and give them that information. We don't track the names, and that's the one thing that I would, we don't get sign-ins, we don't do things like that. That's not our purpose. Our purpose is to go to them and give them information they need so that they will feel comfortable coming to the schools. And so we'll continue to do that outreach piece. But we like to do it from the standpoint of anybody that wants to come and interested in what we're doing in our schools versus identifying a particular group to come, if you will. That's not our point. Our point is...
So now you talk to the teachers and staff. Do you talk to the kids ever? Or is there a means for that?
Well...
Or it's hard to single out.
There's always a means. I think the, again, teachers and counselors and the principals, they know their families the best. They're the ones that work with them every day. And I'm confident that if they need some extra counseling or they need some extra assurance that everything's going to be okay at school, they will do that. But they know who to do it to, and that's very important because we're strategic with it, but we're not identifying them in an outward way. The counselors and the staff, they do a tremendous job of working with the families to meet all their needs. And one of those needs might be to address that safety concern if they have questions regarding it. But we don't ask, we don't ask that status. That's not, in our protocol, that's not what we do.
So if someone's true it?
We want to know why you're absent.
Right.
And you might educate, they might be educated as to how to communicate.
Absolutely.
What the consequences...
Yeah, how to report those absences, how to bring notes, to get excused absences, et cetera.
Maybe reassure...
And we do call you when you're absent, you know? Because we want you, we want you back in school.
Yeah.
Yeah. We probably, and we make a lot of those calls.
Yes, I think I was...
I should say a lot. Our tennis rate's what, 96%? So you look at an industry average, I mean, people would like for their employees to come at 96% rate, right? So we're pleased with our tennis rate. But we obviously want all of them there, and we know how important being in a school is, so...
So the message of this resolution, of course, I'm, you know, an advocate of all kids feeling safe in our schools. And I think I've dedicated a lot of my time to ensuring, you know, that people are welcome and participate in our schools. I guess my concern is on the mechanism of a resolution stating what we currently do. Is that, not the message, but a resolution, the mechanism? Do we have a history of resolutions? Are we in the resolution business?
It's usually to Austin.
There's certainly a precedent...
On what we want to do on behalf of those kids to other people, not restating to our community?
I mean, there's certainly a precedent for school districts in Texas having resolutions.
And, go ahead, Mr. Fleming, y'all.
Well, I was researching this the other day. And it looks like this resolution, welcoming resolution, is kind of sweeping the nation. A lot of states like Pennsylvania, California, Michigan, Illinois, it's blanking in the whole US with school districts giving their version of a welcoming resolution, per my research.
And I think there's nothing to, how do I say this? There's nothing to imply that the school district isn't doing this. You stated it correctly. It is more of a symbolic gesture. At the end of the day, we are very intertwined with our community. And the community we live in has participated in ordinances, resolutions, what you may call it, agendas that are very divisive to the community. At the end of the day, we have a different obligation, which is a high achievement to all students. And we want them to feel reassured in our schools.
So, question? Randy's first.
I share Mr. Baczik's concern. I struggle, we all care about kids. There is no doubt. I mean, I, there is a great sense, and I am extremely proud to be a part of this board with my board colleagues, to say there is a great concern for the safety and welfare of our kids. It just feels like a couple of pages worth of this over and over. I don't know how the community was going to read this and not feel like it's an indictment against our teachers and against, that somehow or other, we're missing some things or that we're not there. And that concerns me. Fort Worth, this is Fort Worth's, they did theirs. The Fort Worth Independent School District will strive to create the safest possible environment for its students and employees, providing them with the foundation needed to learn, thrive, seek assistance and information, and reach each student's potential, and my iPad went dark, in an education-based environment free of insecurity and fear for all its employees, students, and their families, regardless of immigration status. I think I could vote for that. It just feels like, everything that's in here, and I appreciate the sincerity. Candace, thank you for bringing it up. Guillermo, it's something to look at. But how do we take this resolution? And what's it going to accomplish? Other than it's going to make splash in the newspaper or somewhere? I mean, how are we going to actually continue? Because we already do. I'm here tonight to say three things. As a trustee, Randy Shackman is about kids, about our staff, and about helping our educational system be the best for our community possible. That's my goals. And I know they're shared. And as we take a look at this, I say, how do we accomplish that? And what are we going to do to make this work? I'm sorry that people feel nervous or scared driving to church. This resolution doesn't affect church. I'm concerned, you know, I've mentored students. I've cooked meals for students. We've had students into our home. Nobody has ever expressed a great deal of scaredness or concern or fear. And I realize that some of that is ramping up because of media and a lot of other things most recently. But I struggle with the language here that comes across, and again, as you read it, and it's whereas this, and whereas this, and whereas this. It's not simple that says Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD has been, is, and always will be a safe place for kids and institution of higher learning, and that's for all kids everywhere. You know, and that's my struggle. It's critically important that our kids know that this is a place that's safe. But the reality is, kids are safer at schools in CFP than they are almost anywhere. And I'm proud of how hard our staff especially gets the credit for that. And counselors, and nurses, and administrators. And I just don't want to in any way make it seem like that somehow or other, they're not getting that done.
And I, we do, the language in there does say that we are continuing to do this, that we are continuing to follow the law, that we are continuing to prioritize the emotional and intellectual well-being of our students. I don't think it all implies that we haven't done it. But it, there is something about having the backing of an entity that you know and that you respect, reassure you that you're safe there when you have other entities that you know and hopefully can still respect, not affording you the same reassurances. This is in no way, shape, or form, an indictment on the school district. This is just an affirmation of our commitment, a commitment we are well familiar with. But for some folks, it's come into question because there's a lot of institutions that are supposed to be, that are supposed to be committed to the well-being of the citizens of the United States that aren't necessarily appearing to do so right now. Children are very sensitive to this kind of thing. And again, scared students don't learn as effectively.
Two things. I was going to recall how pleased I was if the school district did a customer service training of all staff about two or three years ago. Not that they needed it, but to really make everybody feel welcome that walks into our schools. You don't want to look like you're too busy or you're on your... You don't want to look like you're too busy, or you're on your phone, I'm kidding, or whatever it might be, you're walking laps to be getting your steps in. But, so I'm pleased that the school district is very customer service oriented, and that goes along with the welcoming. But I would ask Dr. Burns, what would you do differently if we approved this resolution?
As a practice, we would continue to do what we've been doing. We'll continue, because, you know, you can always get better at something, so we practice that customer service, right, to get better at it. But again, I speak to you confidently that our staff works diligently to make that safe environment, and to work with families that are having issues, that they can help them resolve them. And I think the practice, the policies the boards have adopted, the practice that we've implemented is in the best interest of our students, and we'll continue to do that.
I'd also like to add that council has looked over this resolution, and if we were to make any unusual commitments, I would assume they'd catch that. Anything illegal, or anything that overcommits us to doing something extra, reassured that it's not in here.
Say that again, I'm not sure I heard that. So, we've had this out, and our attorneys have looked at it.
Anyone else have comments?
Mr. Matthews?
Yes, ma'am.
I am personally just more concerned about the perception of why we need this, so that would be my stated concern.
That was my original concern. You know, as I was researching the welcoming resolution, I noticed that ours, this one, is quite, quite, has a lot, has a lot more content than the others that I've seen out there. Looks like there's a welcoming toolkit that's out there, that they use to form these welcoming resolutions. I kind of agree with Randy, I think we could have used a little softer language and could have made it a little bit more simpler. I think simplicity is great, and I think it's good, I think it's, it's, I think it's more, more palatable for the citizens to understand where you have all these whereas. I think we got about 12, 12, 13 whereas up in here, so something along those lines, but just my personal opinion.
Okay, I'd like to add my two cents worth, and that's about all it's worth. First of all, I appreciate more than I can express the effort and passion that Candace and Guillermo have for this. And I would say that y'all probably are more in tune with the necessity for this than the rest of us.
I take offense to that.
I, but I also agree with Mr. Shackman, and Ms. Klein, and Mr. Fleming, that, maybe we could, could we rewrite it and eliminate some of the, where it looks a little bit overdone, in my opinion. It's great the way it is, but for the audience that we're going to present it to, I think they might appreciate it in a simpler form, perhaps. That's just my opinion. Be all that as it may, do we have any other comments? Because this is an action item. Ms. Klein?
Could it be an information item that we send home to every household? Like, you know, could it just, is there a way to, I don't know.
Well, all of our...
Making it not changing the mechanism.
Not making it a resolution.
Ms. Brown, can you address that question?
Yes, we can send it home.
Not as a resolution, but more as just a, "CFP loves everybody." Right, Richard?
Yes, absolutely.
We love CFP, but CFP loves our kids.
I would say, and many principals are in the, in the audience, they're going to send that letter to their families, that's who they're going to read it from, their principal. I mean, that's who they're going to, that's who they have a connection with, that's who they have a relationship with, and they all do that. They all send their welcome letters, they all reach out to their families, all have their back-to-school night meeting, so they're doing that. Can we do more? Absolutely, we can always do more. But that's who they're going, they know who their principal is most of the time, and that is someone that they have a great deal of respect for. So coming home from them carries a lot of weight, and they will continue to do that. We're glad to do it and put our henning on it, but, you know, other than me walking the buildings all the time and them asking who that guy is, and is he the president? You know, they don't know their superintendent, but they do know the principal.
Is there a value, and I, Ms. Klein, I like what you're thinking, is there, is there a value for us to put together? And I'm kind of looking at our strategic communications, the whole office right there. Is there a way we can put together some information that is direct and specific about SB4, and that it doesn't, that it does not change anything, is specific to say, "Schools are exempt, our SROs are exempt," and communicate effectively that we, again, have been, are, and will continue to always be a place of safety for kids?
Definitely can. Is it okay if I share?
Sure.
Myself and, we were invited to go speak at a local apartment complex, and that's exactly what we shared with Shackman. You know, I spoke to the families about SB4 and that, you know, we're allowed to in the school district, that, the protections, that our schools are safe places, and we, I truly, that's the way that we reach these families, is in small groups where they do feel comfortable. We were, you know, in their apartment complex, and it really worked really well. So that was very effective, and I hope we continue to do that.
I would go on record, and perhaps some of my other board members would coo, but if there is an opportunity or occasion that a board member going to some of those meetings, I would be happy to go and encourage everyone in that regard.
So my question is, what exactly do we lose by offering this assurance ourselves So I'm not, again, we have already acknowledged the very fact that this is policy. It's not, a resolution isn't a change in policy. I am definitely amenable to making the language stronger, that this is something that we do, but I'm still perplexed as to how this isn't something that's helpful.
You had mentioned about having continuing. I would tell you, I don't see continuing in several areas. I think it matters. And I think that one thing you might consider, Mr. Matthews, is maybe a small task committee to bring back to the board, unless there's an urgency tonight, to bring back to the board what is agreed to by maybe a diverse group that can work out what they think is appropriate.
I think that is the best approach, would be to have a subcommittee or task, to review this and make recommendations, and go move forward from there.
I would definitely be amenable to that, that'd be fine.
You know, the idea of tweaking the language, I'm fine with it, as long as we're able to, at the end of the day, get that message across. And I think it, and this may rub some of the people the wrong way, but I think it specifically needs to state immigration status somewhere along the line that's irrelevant with regards to the students in our district.
Well then, by the powers invested in me as president of this board, I would like to, unless I have opposition, I would like to appoint a three-member task force to do exactly what you suggested. Well, Ms. Klein, you were going to be my first round.
I saw Ms. Tara down here.
I think Ms. Klein or Ms. Bocic should be.
No, you don't.
For sure.
No, you don't. I think the three over there look great to me.
I think Ms. Valenzuela for sure. Mr. Fleming for sure.
Hold on a second.
Why don't you do this later?
I want to do this now, and...
Remember, I've been saying, "All power is given to the trustees," so just act, Mr. Trustee.
Just tell them, it's called volunteering.
I think you need to have Mr. Shackman on there as well. And Mr. Ramos.
Well, we're only going to do three.
Well, that's us three.
We can go four. I don't, it didn't have to be, three is not a magic number.
Mr. Ramos, Mr. Shackman, Ms. Valenzuela, and Ms. Bocic will be on the task force.
Mr. Matthews, just for point of clarity here, four is a quorum. Yeah, then they can do action on the board. What you're, what you want to do is submit, subcommittee to bring recommendations to the board to act on.
That's a good point, Dr. Burns.
In theory, four could, they're holding a meeting with that.
That's a great point.
We'd still post the subcommittee meeting, but I would just, I just, we have an attorney over here who's also our chief of staff, who might have an opinion to weigh in on, but I think that's some slippery slope to be in, to appoint a committee of four in a school district for, for committee work.
Yeah.
You were going to say something.
A little bit. Now, Dr. Coleman, would you agree?
That requires a lot more work.
Okay, so the committee will be three.
Candace, you can be on it.
Candace is automatically on it. She's automatic.
She has to buy lunch.
It's fair. Tough affair.
I think people with different perspectives on the committee would be, I think people with different perspectives would be better for the committee than having myself and Candace both on the committee.
I would, I agree with you. I think Mr. Shackman should be on it, and I think...
Tara?
Tara should be on it.
I'm happy to participate, but my, my position is that I just do not think this needs to be in resolution form. And, you know, I'm happy to do whatever I need to do to communicate safe and welcoming messages and talk. I do not think this board needs to pass a resolution to state our commitment. So, that's my take, if you want me on the committee.
Sound like you just X'd yourself off of it.
Can you get me out of jury duty?
No, just, huh? Okay. Then, therefore, I will exclude you from the committee and add Mr. Fleming. So, let's move on. Any problems there?
Do we have to vote to approve this?
Yeah. I know. We do have a motion, this is an action item, I need somebody to make a motion.
We don't have to have any action.
We can make a motion and move it.
No, no, this is, we need an action for committee, though.
You can carry it over to the next meeting.
Yeah.
No, he can appoint any committee he wants. You don't need a vote for a committee.
But we need to, for the record...
For the record, you need to ask it to see if there's not a motion or a segment.
Correct.
And then you can have something else directed at them, so to be official in the record.
For the record, if we don't have a motion, we have, you know, I'm going to call for a motion, if we don't have one, we don't have one.
I don't, you don't need one.
I know that. Do I have a motion? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Our next agenda item is item number 11, closed session. However, there are no matters posted for discussion in closed meeting. Therefore, the board will move on to the next agenda item, number 12, comments from board members regarding posted agenda items. Any comments, board members?
Regarding item number nine, I appreciate Guillermo and Candace's passion for bringing this item forward. Obviously, they care just like we all do regarding the kids in the district, and that's all kids in the district. So, I thank you guys for bringing that to our attention, and so it gives us something to address. That's it.
Any other comments, board members? I'd like to make one. I'm entering my sixth year on the board, and I just, I believe in my heart that tonight's board meeting has been one of the best board meetings I've been involved in, for the simple reason that each and every one of us got to participate and speak what was on their heart and minds. It was a great meeting. Nobody got mad at anybody, you know, we, we, well, if you did, you're hiding it well, you're hiding it well. But I thought it was a very fruitful meeting, and I appreciate each and every one of you. And as far as term limits, I've changed my mind on that. I would like for all seven of us to have lifetime limits on the school board. Okay, all right, okay. So, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 10:04.